And welcome to the October 28, 2013 meeting of the Lake Forest Zoning Board of Appeals. The board is here tonight to work together with all of you, property owners, neighbors, and architects, to continue the tradition that allows community members to work together to preserve the qualities and the unique character that make Lake Forest a special community. We recognize the personal importance of each petitioner's request. Our goal is to respect the requests of the owner while balancing the interests of the community as a whole. For those of you who may not be familiar with the Zoning Board of Appeals, the board hears all requests for variations in zoning and special use permits. The City of Lake Forest is committed to conducting open meetings. To achieve that goal, the board has adopted meeting procedures that ensure that all parties have an opportunity to speak. The procedures are detailed on the agendas available at the back of the room. The meeting is also broadcast on cable television. Speaking on behalf of the entire board and city staff, our goal is to move each petition through the review process as quickly as possible while at the same time balancing the interests of the petitioners, neighboring property owners, and the community at large. So I will start with an introduction, board members, starting from my right.
Lloyd Culbertson, 4th Ward.
Sam Ciccarelli, 3rd Ward.
Stuart Dixon, 2nd Ward.
Jay Kennedy, 4th Ward.
Rich Plonskirt, 2nd Ward.
Bob Franksen, 1st Ward, and with us from city staff this evening is Kathy Cerniak, Director of Community Development. The first item on the agenda is going to be skipped. We do not have any minutes tonight. The next item on the agenda is a continued consideration of a request for a special use permit with a delayed effective date to allow the establishment of the Krebs Center for Medieval and Renaissance Scholarship at 1045 Walden Road. The future Krebs Center would be under the ownership and direction of Lake Forest College. The owners are Robert D. and Ann Krebs. Representatives this evening are Mr. Robert Krebs and Mr. Stephen Scott from Lake Forest I'd first ask, do we have any conflicts of interests or ex parte contacts?
None.
No? We only have one matter tonight. We assume everybody here is for, obviously, this matter and not the 2014 ZBA calendar. So we are going to take full public testimony again tonight from anybody wishing to speak, limited to five minutes apiece. The board is listening intently and respectfully to everybody who has something to say. We value your input in this process, and our procedures are outlined on the agenda in the back of the room at the right side of the sheet. When it's the ZBA's turn to discuss this matter tonight, specifically items number nine and number 12, the board will be offered the same level of respect that we're going to show everybody here. So to that effect, I would ask that there be no booing, clapping, hissing, distractions of that sort, and we thank you in advance for helping us run a productive and respectful meeting this evening. So, to that effect, anybody intending to speak tonight, if you would like to speak or you think you might speak during the public testimony session, if you would stand, raise your right hand, and I'll swear everybody in all at once. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge? Thank you. With that, we move to presentation by the petitioner, which will be Mr. Krebs.
Would he have it on this time?
Yes, it is.
Was it left on or wasn't?
No, we're working.
All right. One second.
All right, Mr. Krebs, I'm over on my wife, 1045 Walden Road, and we've taken the opportunity to come back again to talk about our request for a special use permit for 1045 Walden Road. And I'm not going to go over everything that we discussed again last time. I just think there are a few things I'll point out, kind of review the bidding and conclusions that we reached at the last meeting, and start with some general things. And then Chairman Franksen, who said that there was no doubt about our intent or about our generosity. The questions about taking our property off the tax portal weren't really relevant, and just because some authorities thought we were to avoid estate taxes or other estate kinds of issues. He also said that there was no doubt about the value of this.
I asked if it was on. There was no doubt about the value of this gift to Lake Forest College, and there was no doubt that they would use it in a very good and productive way for the college, and we had many people testify that says that this is an important thing for a liberal art school, to set it apart, to have an advantage, and it's definitely a competitive advantage. The other thing I think that we agreed upon is we can give the house to Lake Forest College, simply give it to Lake Forest College along with the art and the contents in the house and an endowment, which we would most likely do. And we would most likely do this even if we don't get the permit, but the reason we are doing this now is to be transparent and to try to do something, work out something with our neighbors that is okay for them and okay for the college and do this ahead of time. So those were the things that we discussed. And then we got to the point, and again Chairman Franksen said that this is all very nice, but you have a job, the zoning board has a job based upon seven criteria, to decide whether this special use permit fits the qualifications to be granted. And so Steve and I went back, I actually went on YouTube, and for two and a half hours I listened to every word that was said at the meeting last month. I wrote down all the objections, and Steve and I worked together, and we have come up with, we looked at all the topics, all the issues, all the concerns, and we have come up with further restrictions or conditions that the college would agree to and accept as part of the law that would make this special use permit. And that's what we'd like to go through with you now, and I'd like to turn it over to Steve to do that.
Well, thanks again, members of the zoning board. I'm pleased to be before you tonight and have another opportunity, as Rob said, to talk about this very special project for the college. As he indicated, we've done a lot of work since the last hearing to address further concerns and questions that were raised by members of the community or by the zoning board, and what I'd like to do is summarize that work. I explained it in more detail in a submission I filed on Friday with the zoning board, but let me talk about the steps that we've taken that I think are really most important. To clarify the nature and the extent of use, we will limit to three courses per week, the number of courses that are actually taught on the premises. Those courses would take place between 9:00 in the morning and 4:00 in the afternoon, in other words, in total daylight hours. Each course might meet once a week, might meet twice a week, might meet at a maximum three times a week. Most of our courses meet twice a week, but the point is it will be a limit, an explicit limit, on the number of student hours, if you will, in the property. There will be no signage, no external signage, other than perhaps a small gold, if you will, plaque literally by the door mounted on the wall, the front door of the property, but no other signage is contemplated. There are explicit limits that we've agreed to and provided to the zoning board on the number of people who could attend an event at the site, and for that matter, explicit limits on the number of events that might take place over the course of a year. We talked last time about a limit of four in terms of any outdoor events that might take place on the property. There is also, we have now imposed a limit of no more than 10 internal events on the site over the course of the year, if you will, that's fewer than one a month. A lot of concern was expressed about traffic in the area, and we've made some important decisions about how to manage that, that I think really addressed those concerns directly. First of all, college traffic will not use Walden Road at all. We do not intend to make any use of Walden Road for students coming to the property for classes, or for that matter, for evening or other events. Further, we would only use Ringwood as far south, if you will, as the Ringwood driveway to the Krebs Center, so there would be no traffic going beyond that driveway further on Ringwood. The vehicles that we would use, in addition to private cars if necessary, would be college minivans. We will not be using large shuttle buses. Eight-person minivans is the maximum size that we would use to transport people to and from, if, again, either for classes or for an event at the property, there are not private forms of transportation available. If you want to sort of average this out in a way that I think could be explanatory for people, in the course of an average week, as far as I can contemplate, we're talking about, let's say, in a given day, let's say there were two classes in a given day. That would be an average of one minivan, perhaps three private cars going to a class twice a day. That would be at the maximum, frankly, in terms of managing our student traffic, and in terms of any event onsite, either at night or during the daytime hours outside, again, we would manage that by use of minivans shuttling from the college if we need to do so, and private transportation's not available. To put this further in context, because traffic was such a concern, we did a traffic study on Wednesday, October 16th, right at the junction of Mayflower, Walden, and Ringwood roads, right, if you will, in front of the triangle on which the Krebs property rests. And from 7:00 in the morning on Wednesday, October 16th, until 7:00 in the evening, a total of 524 cars went through that junction there, that intersection in front of the Krebs property. Those are cars both coming in, if you will, from Sheridan and cars coming out, going out to Sheridan, either from, again, Mayflower, Walden, or Ringwood. If you will, in terms of total traffic, averaging that out at that site, that's an average of about 44 cars per hour at that junction, or about one every 90 seconds. I do not believe that the amount of traffic that college contemplates and that I just described will add in any meaningful way to traffic that already exists in the area. Significant concern has been raised about the effect of the Krebs Center, if approved, on property values in the area. So we researched, to try to address that concern, we researched residences in the vicinity of Ragdale, St. Mary's Upper School at the junction of Green Bay and Illinois, the Country Day School, and the Sheridan School on Sheridan Road, Sheridan Elementary School. We looked for properties with a 20- to 30-year transactional history so that we'd avoid short-term spikes or depressions in the appreciation history of those properties, and we found several in these cases that I think speak to my point here. In each of the cases, again, and I described these in the submission that we filed last week, appreciation on properties directly proximate to Ragdale, St. Mary's, Country Day, or the Sheridan Road School actually exceeded average appreciation from 1990 forward in the quadrants of the city where those institutional uses are located. Now, does this answer all questions about appreciation or depreciation? No. But is it nevertheless, in my view, a window on what happens to homes that are located near institutional uses in this city, such as those I mentioned, Ragdale and the school properties? And as, again, these examples make clear, appreciation in the cases that we cite actually exceeded what is average in the quadrants of the city where these institutions are located. Now, my final point on this front is that the Krebs Center is not a school, and it's going to be less visible than any of the institutional properties I just mentioned, including Ragdale. It is not a school. It is landscaped so that it's virtually invisible from the streets where the traffic takes place that I already described, and the conditions that we have agreed to in advance, we, the college and Mr. and Mrs. Krebs, I think make it much more likely that appreciation will increase more than even the examples that I've cited near the other institutions here in town. Other concerns were raised about the existence of, or the suggested existence of federal or state regulations governing lighting, exterior lighting, security boxes, pavement, sprinklers inside, the Americans with Disabilities Act. As a letter from a lawyer in Chicago that I filed with the zoning board last week makes clear, there are no such regulations that govern our use of the property in this regard. The only applicable federal regulation is the Americans with Disabilities Act, and the house is already accessible. There's a three-floor elevator in the house, and if any further renovations to make it wholly accessible are required, they will be small because the house was designed and constructed to be accessible. Another concern sort of generally was raised, both at the hearing and in a few letters in the meantime, about the college care of property generally. What I want to say broadly in response to that concern is the college takes incredible pride in the standard of care that we do impose on our campus and for properties that we own. Generally speaking, that standard will only be increased and enhanced, in this case, by the conditions that we've agreed to and the endowment that Mr. and Mrs. Krebs would provide to maintain the property. The only single property that was raised in anything I've seen with the zoning board as an asserted objection to what I just said is a single house at 831 Rosemary Road, which is, if you will, the intersection of Rosemary and Sheridan, and frankly, a phone call to the college would have yielded a lot of information about this. But the fact of the matter is that that house, no one has lived in that house for five years because it has large structural issues. We have used it temporarily for housing while we have been doing a range of construction on South Campus, the value of which is more than $35 million. That temporary storage is now over, and the house will be marketed, as has been the plan, for some real time. It will be marketed this spring for sale to a private owner, and presumably, that private owner is going to knock down the house that's there and build something new. We have maintained that property from the external, from any point you can see it from a street outside, just as we do with all our property, and I've gone on at length about this just because it was a specific objection, again, that was raised to make clear what the situation with that property is. Back to the Krebs Center, further additions or clarifications of things we said a month ago. To be very clear about this, there will be no students in the Krebs Center other than under supervision. There will obviously be no students staying there overnight. We have agreed, this was a suggestion by our Board of Trustees, that we impose as one of the requirements for our annual institutional audit, that our external auditors examine and evaluate our compliance with the conditions we have already agreed to, and that audit would take place the first year after the property is transferred. In addition, as we agreed last time, we will, of course, make any reports to the city during year one as the city report has called for, those reports to the city manager or the zoning board or anyone else in the city who would like to see them. I'm certainly aware that even these changes, these additional changes that we've made, additional restrictions on the use of the property, will not satisfy everyone who objects to the use, and I am sorry about that. I do believe, however, that we have responded reasonably to every objection, every question or concern about the property that was raised either before the hearing last time or at the hearing. And I guess I want to end with these two points. There are many people in the community, including a number of close-by neighbors of the Krebs Center who support this project, who understand the benefits that it would bring, not only to the college, and of course, those benefits are considerable, and I won't go over them again because we did it length in the prior hearing, but residents who also understand the benefits of the community and the benefit to the preservation of the property itself, a benefit that really can be no further guaranteed than by the conditions the college has agreed to in setting up this project. So my hope is that all of those who do support the project and are either here tonight or here last time or have written letters will have as much influence for the zoning board as those who oppose it. And on balance, I hope that the additional steps the college has taken to address concerns that have been raised can be balanced by the zoning board with the clear benefits to the college and to the community by this project, and I certainly hope that you will see your way fit to approving the special use permit. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to staff's report. Ms. Cerniak.
Thank you, Chairman Franksen, members of the board. Last time, we talked a little bit about special use permits generally, and I wanted to spend a few minutes reviewing that again. Special use permits have been used throughout Lake Forest to do things differently, to allow a unique mix of uses, to allow some interesting and sometimes challenging relationships. I think it's fair to say that every special use permit that has come before the city, whether it be the zoning board or the plan commission, has been controversial, whether it was Grove Cultural Campus, Ragdale, Elloa Farm more recently. In each of those cases, many of the same concerns were raised, traffic, noise, impact on residential character, impact on values, times of day, changes to the property. And in each of those cases, a way was found to balance the various interests and to allow a special use that, I believe in every case, has, after some experience with it, been found to be of value to the community and has, in most cases, been found to be valued by the neighboring residents. In addition to institutional uses, within the last couple of years, there was also a special use permit considered and granted for a for-profit business use. Craig Bergman Landscaping came in, requested a special use permit to establish not only his residence, but also his landscape studio on property owned for residential use. As we look at the unique properties that we have in Lake Forest, in fact, the city may see more of those types of requests as we look at ways to use these, the structures that perhaps don't fit neatly with the needs of a family today. So this isn't something new coming before the city. Special use permits have been granted, those uses have been successful, and those uses have, in fact, become an important part of the fabric of the community. You do have in your staff report a series of 12 recommended conditions of approval. I won't read through all of those, but to summarize, conditions eight, nine, and 10 speak directly to the types of uses that would be permitted in the Krebs Center. They speak to the frequency with which those uses could occur, the duration of events, and the size of those events. The conditions also establish requirements for responsibility for the site and for monitoring of the site. The conditions also speak directly to preservation of the property, the residents, and the contents of the residents in the manner in which they exist today. From the staff perspective, situations where we have an ordinance, ordinances carry the force of law, when we have an ordinance that governs the use of a property and establishes various criteria, various limitations, various conditions that need to be met, that puts the city in a very strong position with respect to enforcement and with respect to monitoring. In fact, the cases where there aren't such agreements, those are situations where we often have problems, situations perhaps where private homes are rented out. Private homes can be rented all the time, and things can happen that may not be consistent with the neighborhood. Unless something is clearly in violation of a law, there is no special agreement that governs those properties. Special use permits are an important and very strong tool for the city to use. In the case of this particular project, there will actually be three agreements that govern uses at this property. There will be the city's special use permit, there would be an agreement between the donor and the college, which the city wouldn't be a part of, but it would be our expectation that that would carry with it its own set of requirements and conditions, and there would also be an operating policies and procedure, essentially an implementation document, that the college would need to submit for the city manager, to the city manager for review and approval, and assurance that all of the conditions and limitations of the special use permit are met, that would need to be in place before the effective date of the special use permit. So in this case, it's not just a special use permit that would be governing this property, but these other documents as well. Finally, I just want to review from a process standpoint, any recommendation from the zoning Board of Appeals is a recommending body to the city council. Your actions are not final. A recommendation to either approve or deny the petition would go to the city council. The zoning board of appeals also has the ability to continue a matter. Anytime you feel that more information is needed, you can continue a matter to a date certain, you can continue it more broadly. The zoning board of appeals also has the ability to table a matter if a longer period of consideration or it seems appropriate to set aside the discussion. So those are the options that the zoning board has to consider tonight, and I would be happy to. There is one more item I wanted to touch on. There was a question, I believe, Board Member Dixon asked about the former college president's residence at 738 Rosemary Road. That's located on the northwest corner of Sheridan Road and Rosemary Road. There was a special use permit granted to allow that property, after the new president's residence was established, to allow that property to be used for offices to support current and former students. That special use permit was approved, I believe, in 2001. That use was faced with some objections from neighbors. There were conversations, much like has occurred with this petition, and I am not aware of any neighbor concerns over the use of that property today. It fits very quietly into the neighborhood, so I just wanted to provide that in response to your earlier question. Thank you.
Okay. So let's move on to questions from the board, questions, clarification, requests to the petitioner or staff, and we're going to come back and discuss later, but not right now. Let's just try and get all the questions out that we might have. No, we can start?
Follow-up questions?
There'll be an opportunity for that down the road, but if we can kind of get them on the table now, now would be a good time to do it. So whoever'd like to start. Nobody does? Oh, go ahead, say.
I believe I read in one of the reports, Kathy, that if Mr. Krebs donates his property without a special use permit, that there will be no governance of what the college does with that property by the city, whereas if he has a special use permit, there are many criterias that need to be followed and enforced. Am I correct?
The city would regulate the property if there was no special use, the same as we would regulate any of your residences. If you were conducting an activity that violated the city's noise ordinance, for instance, we would follow up at your house and we would follow up at the Krebs residence if it were under the college ownership. But if the property is donated to the college, yes, the residence can be used for housing for faculty, it could be used as a residence for the president, it could be rented out, just as your homes could be rented out. There could be events, they would not be limited in number. You're correct that a special use permit would provide much, many more limitations and restrictions on the use of that property and would give the city the ability to monitor that property much more closely, be in regular conversation with the college, and be sure that that special use permit is being followed.
Thank you.
May I follow up on that? Kathy, would classes be permitted?
Classes would not be permitted under an ordinary residential district.
And where is that?
And where is that? How is that stated in the ordinance, or is it specifically prohibited in the R4 provisions, or?
The R4 provisions, as with any zoning district, lists uses that are permitted. It is a permissive ordinance. Classes are not listed and therefore would not be permitted to regularly occur in a residential district. However, in residential districts, on occasion there are special event permits granted, for instance. Sometimes there's filming that occurs in homes throughout the community. There could be a special event held that involves a lecture. There could be various fundraising events.
Let's take that example. If there were evening events, or anytime during the day events, where guests were invited and a lecture presented, and how would you differentiate that from a class if students attended and perhaps even received credit for attending?
I think that's a challenge for staff. That's why with a special use permit, there, the city will have much more leverage. You could decide one Saturday afternoon to bring a guest author to your home, and you could invite your friends, and that, that would be something that, that would not be in violation of any ordinance.
So, it's a pretty gray line.
We try and not get too involved in what, what occurs in single-family residences, and, and I think many people would be surprised at the different types of events that occur throughout our community, many without disruption to neighbors, some with disruption to neighbors.
Wouldn't you think, however, that at some juncture, if this was occurring on a regular basis, that it could be challenged as in violation of R4 provisions?
Yes. I think if there were regularly scheduled classes and a class schedule was published, and those classes were being held at the Krebs residence, that would clearly be in violation of the residential zoning district.
Thank you. Did you want to continue, Sam?
I did not.
Mr. Chairman, may I continue with a few questions?
I'm sorry, what?
May I, may I continue with a few questions?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. I want to ask the petitioner about the number of courses and classes, so if you would... First, I would like to once again acknowledge the extraordinary generosity of the Krebs proposal, and I clearly see the unique advantages and opportunities this proposal could offer the college, and I'm not challenging in any way the worthiness of the cause. We are here to consider a special use permit as it may impact the neighborhood, and that's where I'd like to confine my line of questioning. The, with respect to the classes, I'm glad to see that there's some specification that limits the number of courses that may be held during the week. Now, you've indicated that, well, first of all, would there be anything on the weekends?
No.
Would that?
No, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
No, no classes, no courses.
Courses, courses on the weekends, right. Would you be willing to include that, either, that language either in the special use permit or in the operating agreement you have?
Oh, of course. To be honest, I did, absolutely. I didn't think about it because we don't teach classes on the weekends.
Right.
But I'm certainly willing to make that explicit.
You don't now. This is
That's fine.
10 years in the future. I'd hate to see that loophole there.
Sure.
The, you've also indicated that Monday through Friday, classes would be held between the hours of 9:00 and 4:00 p.m.
Correct.
Again, could that language be added to a special use permit or the operating agreement?
Right. I actually have it in the conditions that we've added, that I submitted to the board last year.
Kathy, I don't really know where the proper place to put those kind of restrictions are, but...
I would just suggest that, that you think about conditions for the special use permit that are reasonable for the city to enforce, and certainly a condition that says classes should only be held between these hours, that's something that we can verify by a schedule, so that would be appropriate to add.
Okay, thank you. You also mentioned that the three courses, two to three classes per course during the week. So, if I'm doing the math right, that's six to nine classes or class periods during the week.
It's actually really three to nine, because there are certain courses that meet once a week.
Okay, so three to nine, no weekend classes. Let's just turn to the number of, the maximum number of people that you would permit at an indoor event. You state the number is 40 persons. Is that all day? Is that at any given time? What?
No, the thought there is frankly this. Rob and Ann Krebs have entertained often in the home, and they have been able to accommodate inside the home as many as 40 people. So, I frankly just used that number as a maximum number based on experience and said, "We will not exceed what has already been the number."
But again, would that be at any given moment in time, or would that be an all-day maximum?
I believe, and at least this was the intention, that that number applies to the no more than 10 evening events in the course of a year. You know, we, in terms of daytime events, again, we're talking, in terms of anything in contemplation, we're talking about the classes that we already discussed. So, I'm saying if there were an evening lecture, for example, that the limit on the number of people who could attend that lecture would be 40.
What I'm trying to zero in on is, is during the day, during that nine to four timeframe on weekdays. I'm trying to get a handle on what the maximum number of people would be on-site at any given time.
Well, the maximum number of people on-site would be 40.
Okay.
And the only way that I can consider, I can conceive of that number applying during the daytime would be on a rare occasion, and it's really just something we don't do, but would be a rare occasion if, for example, there were a lunchtime lecture, which would count as one of the 10 per year. But for that lunchtime lecture, there would be, again, a limit of no more than 40 who would come to the house for that.
So, if you're having, would, would you have two classes at the same time?
No.
So, there'd only be one class per time slot?
That's right.
And those two times, there are only two time slots during the day?
Now, there are, there are multiple time slots during the day, but in terms of classes that would be appropriate to hold there, they would, again, be between the hours of 9:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the afternoon, and I can write this in if you'd like as an additional stipulation, because it's something certainly that, that was within my mind. There would be no more than one class there at a time. So, typically, 1:00 in the morning, 1:00 in the afternoon, or again, if it's one of the courses that meets only once a week, that could be for three hours in either of those time periods.
How about the class size?
Our average class size is, I mean, this is across the board at the college. Our average class size is 18 students. Most of our classes in art history or history itself, relevant to the Renaissance, for example, are smaller than that, let's say 15.
Again, would you be willing to consider a cap on the, on the class size?
Yes. I know we can do that, we can do that now if you'd like, and I would agree to a cap of 20 students. Again, with the idea that in most cases, it's going to be smaller than that. But if that helps to be that specific, I can do so.
So, there's a little confusion. The staff report said 12-person minivan, I believe, in your office?
Our minivans are eight-passenger.
Eight-passenger, okay. Is there any way you can envision that simultaneously, there would ever be 40 people attending class at the same time?
No.
So, if you had a maximum class size of 20, you'd need three, three minivans to get?
No. The likelihood is there would be one minivan and, let's say, four private cars.
Could there be one minivan and 10 private cars?
It's theoretically possible, but that's not how our students travel.
Go ahead, please, follow up. Follow up, Rich.
Is there a way to acquire the students to travel along the campus to the Krebs Center and college minivan, as opposed to driving independent to limit the traffic?
I have, I have a couple of responses. One is, yes, it would be possible, although we have a limited number of minivans, and I cannot guarantee on a given day that there might be two available at, at, at the required time. The second thing to say is, I know from just conversation that I've had informally with neighbors, the premise of your question is that two minivans would be preferable to three or four or even five private vehicles, and I'm not sure that premise is shared by people broadly.
I think the basis of my question is just that it seems in a corporate world, in order to, if you could find a way in a corporate world to, to accomplish what you finally accomplished with absolutely no disruption to the neighborhood, so that nobody could know there was any difference in anything happening as opposed to the day before.
Right.
Then that might be something that people could accept. And so, I guess we're all sort of thinking about, at least, the culverts that I were talking about, how do you minimize the impact? All these things are sort of
Right.
You know, turning the school a little tight at this.
And I guess, you know, Mr. Plonsk, I have to sort of respond this way. I think we have gone really as far as we can reasonably go in anticipating actual situations. The example that I gave earlier, when I was, I was up here before, is think about two times a day when one minivan and even four or five private cars drive to the property and then drive back. Put that in the context of 524 cars in the area in the course of 12 hours in a day, and it really seems a little much to me, I guess, to suggest that that is going to make any measurable impact on anybody.
Could I follow up on your?
Just a question. So, the answer is no. I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying.
Right. I can, if, if the question is, can I promise that there would be two minivans always available to take students to any class there, I cannot make that promise. Right.
Let me kind of along the same lines. You did a traffic study. Did the traffic engineer come up with an estimated number of vehicles per day that the college, maybe I didn't see that in here?
No. Let me describe this study, because we did this study internally, and I can tell you exactly what we did. We had four students, 12 hours there, count cars. That's what we did.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay.
So, it was, it was an internal study?
That's correct.
Okay. So, let me ask another question. You said earlier that the college takes great pride in maintaining its property and buildings, and both on campus and, and off. And then, in comes this letter from somebody pointing out the 831 Rosemary property, which seemed to really hit the target of a potential issue, and you know, that person had her pictures and you had your pictures. You know, one could, you know, draw a line between the worst pictures and say, "Well, look, this is how this property has kind of deteriorated over the years, being unstable or whatever condition it is." Boy, same thing might happen to the Krebs property over time. What would you say to that?
Couple of things, Chairman. First of all, as to 831 Rosemary, I do dispute the contention the property has not been maintained, and I tried to explain that earlier, that the relevant maintenance on the property is external maintenance, maintaining the grounds while we have been waiting for the time to sell the property. What you can see if you go around the back of the house and look through the windows in the back of the property at stuff stored inside is what you see, material stored inside. But it's been the college's plan for five years, once we were done with construction on South Campus, to end that. We're now at that point, and the property will be sold next year. I could have provided the zoning board with photographs of any number of properties owned by the college on and off campus, but that feels like surplusage to me. We've invested $100 million in the campus, I think, and spent a great deal of money every year to maintain what we have, and if I move to the Krebs property, in addition to everything that we already routinely do, there are all the conditions we've agreed to, plus an endowment that will probably generate about $250,000 a year exclusively for the purpose of maintaining the property according to the conditions the zoning board would, would approve, if you approve this project.
Thank you. Yep.
Just going to the same line of question in terms of
Trying to understand what the impact on the neighborhood is, not to say you're doing it right or wrong, just understand.
Sure.
Are the college vans that you'd be using marked in any way? Do they say Lake Forest College on them, or they just look like vans that people drive every day to and from town, and would they be conspicuous in any way, or would they just?
They do look exactly like vans that people drive around town every day. Yes, on the driver's side, on the front door, there is a small college logo.
Okay. I think in, in the notes that you, that you submitted, you said that there wouldn't be any entrance to the property on Walden.
Correct.
Right. I'm wondering if you'd be willing to seal the Walden entrance, so that there wouldn't be any chance of any access, because if, I just drove it again recently, just to try to understand, and you know, that's a, a very residential, very secluded street. I know there was a lot of opposition from people that lived down that road
True.
in terms of traffic and so forth, and if it's sealed, then there's absolutely, obviously no way to get in or out.
Right. In, in, and it's, it's in response to those concerns that we did make the decision, again, that we simply will not use Walden. Literally sealing that point of access is problematic for two reasons. One is that the maintenance people, gardeners, others who will be going to the property, find it much, much more direct and convenient to go that side to where they do their work. Secondly, there are fire issues in terms of access and, and egress. But what I can do is, I mean, there are probably any number of possible solutions to this. One might be the installation of a single bollard that could be raised or lowered, probably would be up most of the time. Again, I want to be sensitive to the aesthetics of the neighborhood and what we would decide to do here, or how we would decide to, to use that entrance. There are gates at the Walden Road driveway, but I'm loath to say now the very best way of guaranteeing that result, except that I will guarantee college, college vans will not use that, that form of access.
Are there any, Kathy, are there any issues with regard to fire and other sorts of things that would require a second entrance like that, or?
For a residential property would, would normally not require a second entrance. I, I can't speak to that directly, though.
Let me maybe elaborate a little bit. When we built the house, we wanted two curb cuts, one on Walden and one on Ringwood, and we actually wanted to put a gate on, on both areas. Frank Beidler, who is here, agree, he said, and we agreed, that it just is going to ruin the look of Walden Road when you go by to put big gates there, or any kind of gates there. So, what I had, so we put gates over on Ringwood, and, because I don't think anybody, college us or the college, wants people just driving through, so we had a gate on one side. And it is true that when a, a maintenance truck comes in, like the landscaping, they, rather than try to come in and turn around in the square, they come in one way and go out the other way. But what I had made, I had, I had two, I kind of, they're, they're portable gates. They were a way to get around what Frank said we couldn't do. I had some wrought iron, little, little portable pieces made that I could put out in front there if I ever needed to and close that off. I've never had to use them, because it hasn't been a problem for us, but something like that could be moved up there. They're, they're innocuous, they're movable, so when the maintenance people come in, they could pull them, and they could come through, but it would keep other traffic from the college from using Walden Road, and in, actually in a way physically enforce what the college has said they're going to do.
I have a couple more.
Okay.
You mentioned
You mentioned that, that there wouldn't be any college traffic further south on Ringwood, past the entrance to the house. Could you just expand on what you mean by that? Parking, anything that?
Yeah. The, the, the idea is to limit even our use of Ringwood to the point where the drive onto the property from Ringwood ends. So we would instruct, on a semester basis, if you will, we would instruct, obviously, anyone driving a college minivan, but in addition, any students who would be involved in a course during the day about how to drive in and how to drive out, that they are not permitted to drive further south on Ringwood. In terms of an evening event, if there were one, we would simply have a, a guard or a, a college employee there, stationed there, to direct people in and then direct them back out.
What about entrance to the property using Ringwood from the south as opposed to Ringwood from the north? Is there a way to, to stipulate or, or to make part of what you agreed to, to only access the property from Sheridan to Ringwood from the north as opposed to driving around? Because I notice if I, if I look at this map, which we've done, which shows letters in opposition and letters in support and so on and so forth, there's a lot of opposition on Ringwood coming from the south.
Right. That would actually be easy to do. I mean, and, and there's really, coming from the college, there's no logical reason to go other than from Sheridan straight in and out. And, yes. I want to, I want to make this point, that this will be something the college will educate our community about and enforce. I'm not seeking to impose that enforcement obligation on the city of Lake Forest in this regard.
I guess my last question is this. When there are events at the house, and there are supply trucks or whatever, people bringing food, whatever it's going to be, are they going to be any different than the trucks that would come for a private event under the R4 designation? Is there going to be, and somebody in the neighborhood would look and see the truck and go, oh, the Krebs are having an event. Would they think any different? You guys were bringing various things to the, to the facility for an event?
Our catering trucks for an event look exactly like catering trucks for any other event anywhere else.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd just like to follow up on one of Mr. Plonsker's questions. The, the minivans, will they be, who will drive them? Will it be, will it be a driver or a student?
Just to note again, that we're talking about some years into the future, potentially. And the college has, I will call it a, an internal licensing process, but it, through this process, we do allow students to become licensed to drive our minivans, and so we have a limited number of students who have that privilege. So it could be such a student who would be driving students back and forth through the minivan, as we do right now for any number of other purposes.
Would the van stay on premise during the class?
I think, I think that would depend on whether there is another use for the van, but in all likelihood, yes, because courses, again, are typically an hour. So the van will go there, drop the students off, wait, bring them back.
Perhaps a trivial question, but would the driver remain in the van and, with the motor running during the winter months?
No.
So the driver would come inside?
Yeah. We're, we don't let our, to the extent that I'm aware of it, have anything to say about it, we do not let people idle in our vans.
Thank you.
President Shaw, since our last meeting, has there been any dialogue between the college and the Krebs family with regards to the issues and concerns presented to us this evening in terms of dialogue or perhaps discussion around compromise?
I'm not sure if I quite understand the question.
We have a group of neighbors that are in conflict with what's being proposed and the college's presentation. Since our last meeting, has there been any dialogue or information exchange or discussion or perhaps some sort of attempt to look at compromise as it relates to the proposition in front of us this evening?
Well, I guess I would say, Mr. Dixon, I believe that, first of all, I have talked to several neighbors, I mean, I believe that Mr. and Mrs. Krebs have also. We have not had, for example, another open house at the Krebs residence as we did a couple of times before this process. But in terms of compromise, I feel that the additional restrictions that we have presented to the board in anticipation of tonight really represent significant movement on the part of the college to bring it to a point where we really are addressing the concerns that I believe the neighbors have raised.
And were those compromises test flighted with the neighbors prior to tonight's meeting?
In informal conversations, yes.
Great. Thank you.
Of course, this has been a pretty long process, but, you know, I think I've been very transparent. I wrote a letter to our neighbors on Walden Road when I wanted to do this. I offered to sit down and talk to them. The only real conversation I've had has been with Don Suter. I talked to him before the last meeting, when we had put the original group of conditions together. I don't see him, there he is, okay. I mean, you, correct me if I'm wrong, but when, when we did talk, at the time, he, he indicated he thought that we had done about as much we could do on conditions. He had to make up his mind and decide what he was going to do. The, we talked again afterwards. We have, we've pledged to remain friends after we go through all this. We just disagree on things, and I'm more than willing to sit down and talk with Corky Cathcart or Sal, or Corliss Mueller. I think I have offered to do that, to do that at the beginning. I did talk a little bit to Jim Cathcart, and I'm more than willing to continue, or to start and continue a dialogue. But as Steve says, I really don't know what more we could do with the last conditions we took, especially for our neighbors on Walden Road, to do anything more that could satisfy somebody if somebody just, period, doesn't want this to happen.
Richard.
I just have a question. Assuming that the city council would approve this, what's the earliest, what's the target date for this transaction to the effect, to the transformation?
You know, I said at the last meeting, the reason I'm doing this is because I want it out up front. I want, I want to be transparent about it. My wife and I intend to live in the house just as long as we can. I'm 71 years old.
Seventy-one years young.
Thank you. Lloyd.
Yeah. One question, maybe it's more for staff, but is it a fair statement to say that the, the only thing less restrictive about the special use permit versus regular residential is the fact that they're able to hold the small classes? Or are there other things that they would be able to do that we're not really picking up on?
In addition to the classes, the special use permit would allow up to five unrelated people to reside in the house. The residential zoning districts allow up to three unrelated people to reside in the house for an unlimited period of time. In this case, the, the time period for the, the residence is, is limited.
So if, if, like, if somebody was looking to buy the house next door or whatever, and they heard that this, there's a special use permit on, on this particular property, it's owned by Lake Forest College, and they would call the village to try to understand what all, all does that mean? I mean, how would it be explained to them? You know, what?
If, if someone was looking at property in the area, they could certainly, and, and they heard about the Krebs Center, they could certainly request a copy of the special use permit, and that would be provided. We could talk through the conditions with them, so that information would be available. Does, does that answer your question?
Yeah. I'm just trying to think in a realistic situation, if somebody's looking at, you know, the house next door, and they get worried, and then, how is this all going to come together? I mean, answers as well as it can be.
So is there, just to follow up on that, is there, is there a limit to the amount of time that unrelated people can live in the house under R4 but not under the special use, or vice versa, or what is it?
Vice versa. Under, in, in any of the residential zoning districts, any of you could bring in, in addition to your family, someone not related by blood or marriage. You can bring in three additional people to live in your home, or you could live somewhere else and you could rent out to, out your home to up to three people not related by blood or marriage. There is no time limit. It's just a rental situation.
And under the special use, there is a time limit?
I believe, and, and President Scott, maybe you have your finger on it, I believe there was a suggested limitation.
There is. I just have two things to say, Mr. Plonsker. The first is, again, we're not talking about any of the visiting scholars in a legal definition residing there. They would be guests for short periods of time. The maximum that we've explicitly provided is a single semester.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other, any other questions from the board? Kind of. So why don't we move on now to, if there's no more questions, we'll move on to public testimony, for anybody wishing to speak. Again, we heard a lot of testimony last month. We're happy to hear it again. To the extent you don't need to repeat what was said last time, that's fine, if you want to, that, we'll listen. And we just ask you to limit it to five minutes, five minutes apiece. So I think you want to go first, sir. And if you'd, when you step up to the podium, if you'd state your name and address, that'd be helpful.
Thank you. My name's Richard Lenny, live at 1020 Havenwood Lane, and 1020 Havenwood Lane is at the very end of Havenwood, in the back of our property is, butts up again for lack of a better term, Ringwood at Mayflower. So obviously very close to the, to the Krebs residence. I've been a resident of the North Shore for about 25 years, and our current residence for six years. I also serve on the board of the Lake Forest Hospital, so I obviously have a deep commitment to the betterment of our community. I'm also on the board of Directors of Ravinia, so I know what it takes to be a good neighbor from both a business and philanthropic standpoint. I wrote a letter to, to the zoning board and am in full support of the Krebs Center. I've, I've heard a lot of what the issues are. From my personal standpoint, I think the, the benefits to the community, the benefits to Lake Forest College, the long-term preservation of the, of the Krebs property are clearly out, outweigh any potential concern. So I'm fully supportive of that and, and appreciate the opportunity to, to speak to you and address you and, and hope that it's approved favorably. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Newbauer. I addressed this board last meeting. I'm also the resident who discovered the college's property at 831 Rosemary, which was in great disrepair. I'd just like to make the point that, you know, whether the Krebs' home falls into disrepair when the money runs out is not the issue. The issue is the college's disregard of the law, of, of the city code. This is a residential unit. It's been used as a warehouse. It's been used as a workshop for five years. The neighbors there see the big Aramark buses or the trucks come in twice a day, backing up beeping. So clearly, the college doesn't have any regard for the city code. Whether it would have greater regard for a special use permit is anyone's guess. Ten parties, ten indoor parties a year, maybe that's really 12. Maybe the four outdoor turn into six. Again, we just have past history to go by on the college's view of the law, and it certainly showed no respect with regard to the law, the city code, at 831 Rosemary. The traffic study conducted by students on a cold October day, again, to even state it is to point out, it's a useless study, not professionally done, done on a cold day, not on a day when people are out jogging, walking, pushing buggies, et cetera. So I would submit that that study is useless. There is no benefit to the neighborhood or the city if this property is used in this way. It is counterintuitive to suggest that, as staff has, that there is, that this is a good special use, that this comports with the statute, the city code. It's, the argument was made that the properties that surround St. Mary's, Ragdale, and I, I can't remember the other property, actually rose in value relative to other properties in Lake Forest, and therefore, we can assume, so the argument went, that property values will rise in the Walden neighborhood if the special use is granted. Again, a completely useless argument, not supported even by common sense. We don't know how much more the property values would have risen had they not been by Ragdale or St. Mary's or Grove or wherever. So to say that they rose more doesn't really capture all the value that they could have risen by. There's no way to know that. There is a way to know, however, that if this special use is granted, there, there will be increased traffic, noise, all manner of things. We can't predict now fully. And to suggest that this is, however, a great boon to the city and the neighborhood, I don't, I don't get it. It might be a boon to the college, but it is not to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Could we get your address one more time?
302 Northwestern.
Thank you.
And Ms. Newbauer, since we last spoke, have you had any dialogue with the college with regards to your issues and concerns?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm down on your list to cross-examine Mr. Schute. I want to pronounce your name properly, sir.
Scott.
Scott.
Correct.
Scott. Names are important. I was on your list to cross-examine Mr. Sklet, Scott, excuse me.
And by the way, cross-examination will come after public testimony?
Right.
So, but you're welcome to participate in public testimony as well.
Well, I wanted to say, I didn't want to confuse it. As I sit listening to the discussion today, more so than at the last meeting, and when I hear the staff report on recommending this to your committee that you approve it, and I hear the comments about values, I have a question, and I really mean this sincerely, I'm not being facetious. I come away from it occasionally, wondering, does the zoning board work for Lake Forest College or for the citizens of Lake Forest? And I mean that honestly. I've lived in Lake Forest over 40 years, my wife and I. In fact, I built a home in the Havenwood area, and I've always thought that it was a, kind of a plus to have Lake Forest College here. It has a fine reputation. As far as I know, their reputation is, is well-served. But most of us, certainly in that area and throughout the city, don't have a real interest, and that's really a, I think, a fair word, in what's going on there day to day. I mean, it just doesn't affect our lives. And that's not a criticism of the college, that's simply a statement of fact. We had an ex-mayor here at the last meeting who spoke eloquently about the values of approving this, and he even indicated he thought we were a little parochial in being worried about traffic and noise, possible college fun. traffic and noise, possible college fun, which concerns some of us. And I got to thinking, as I said here, listening today, why is this an issue in terms of what's best for the neighborhood? There's a map that we have done, I say "we," some of us are opposed to this, and it shows the dominance of people in the community who would be affected by this, and their opposition. If I sat in your position, I'd like to think I would feel the same, that while this is a great boon for Lake Forest College, at least that's what we're told, that it gives them some great advantage, which will increase their enrollment, I might add, as an aside, that's great. But as a neighbor over there, I really have no interest in that. And I think the people opposed to this, who live much closer, who have their kids walking on Walden, it's just, I think it's hypocritical to say to me, "Well, Dave, you should forget your objections, because this is such a wonderful thing for the community." And I say, "Well, I'm part of the community. My neighbors are part of the community, and they're opposed to it." And again, with all due respect to the staff, I know the Grove College area. I used to go out there in retirement and work at the Career Center, which is out there. They help people to get jobs when they don't have jobs. To compare that with the Walden area, I'll be very careful how I say this, that's just not professional. To have students doing a study of traffic, I think Mrs. Newbauer's already indicated the lack of professionalism there. When you put that all together, and you folks have to think about this, I think, how a neighbor who's opposed to it thinks, what's the deal here? Why is this pressure to get this approved? We have a mayor, an ex-mayor speaking for it. What's going on here? When the dominant position of the people that live there are totally opposed to it? I suggest the committee be very thoughtful on that particular side of this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jerry Henry. I live at 771 Barbary Lane. For the record, I am on the Board of Trustees of Lake Forest College and have been a previous chairman of the board. But I've also been on the zoning board of appeals for six years in the past, also served as first ward alderman. And over those years of serving with the city, it struck me often that people in general, people in Lake Forest in particular, tend to overestimate the amount of traffic in our congested areas and totally underestimate the amount of traffic in our less congested areas. Of course, that's fairly natural, of course, in the congested areas, the cars are not moving, stopped at the stoplight, stop sign. In our less congested areas, traffic moves very well. Part of the reason, I guess, that some people were startled at the 500-plus cars that were counted in one random 12-hour period. But I'd like to talk about traffic for just a minute, and I will be brief, of the seven criteria required to be met in order to obtain a special use permit. Only one even mentions the word "traffic," and that deals with providing ingress and egress designed to prevent an increase in congestion. So traffic, it's traffic congestion that the code is talking about. The code is not concerned primarily with the number of additional cars. That's a small number here. The code is not concerned with an increase in the percentage of cars, an even smaller number. It's concerned with congestion, and I would submit to you that on Walden Lane and Ringwood, there is no congestion. There being no congestion, any small addition to the traffic in the area is just not relevant under the code. Now, that being said, the college has listened to the traffic objections from the neighbors and has made extensive commitments in that regard. And I say to you, the board of the college firmly backs up that commitment. In addition, I would hope that the board will agree that the great benefit to come to the college and to the community from this most generous gift will far outweigh any perceived detriment to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Corliss Beeler. I live at 1057 Walden Road. My home is the second house beyond the Krebs' property, and my husband and I brought our home in 1989. Walden Road is a one-lane private road that dead-ends at a bridge that crosses a ravine, and that is closed to vehicular traffic. There are only five homes on Walden, including the Krebs' property, and the homeowners maintain the street independent of the city. In fact, we just repaved the street at our own expense. And in 2000, the residents of Walden, at great expense to themselves, created a conservation easement to preserve its unique beauty and privacy. I hope each one of you have visited our street so that you can see for yourself the nature of the road and how quiet and peaceful the area is. Walden Road is not able to handle heavy traffic going in and out of the street, as it is a one-way, dead-end street. There is limited visibility on the road because due to its fairly overgrown natural landscape, and the road is not straight, it's curved. If someone enters Walden Road in a vehicle, the only way to exit is by turning around in one of the residents' driveways. The adjoining streets, Mayflower and Ringwood Road, are also lightly traveled and residential. These streets and Walden Road are nothing like Sheridan, Waukegan, or Green Bay Road. And to compare them and suggest they can handle a significant increase in traffic is at best misleading. I don't agree with the traffic study. If this special use permit is granted to the Krebs', the problems that it will create will be significant. Our quiet and peaceful neighborhood will be compromised, and our property values will be greatly diminished. And to say the residents of Walden Road and the surrounding neighbors will not be negatively impacted by this decision is completely false. And to say we should gladly put up with this situation for the good of Lake Forest College is insulting. It is impossible for me to comprehend how anyone would even consider this idea as appropriate to our neighborhood or any other neighborhood in Lake Forest. Can you imagine such a thing happening in your neighborhood, on your street? If this special use permit is granted, then can anyone in Lake Forest donate his or her home to any public organization that might hold any imaginable kind of public meeting or gathering on the property? If by granting this special use permit, do you want to set this precedent and take the chance that this might happen in your neighborhood and next to your home? Would anyone here be willing to see their property values decrease and their privacy diminished through no decision of their own? My husband and I decided to live on Walden Road because of its privacy and beauty. We did not decide to live two houses away from the Lake Forest College annex. I believe it's irrelevant that the Krebs' house is a lovely replica of an Italian villa. I believe it's irrelevant that they have a lovely garden they and others want to preserve. I believe it's irrelevant that Lake Forest College would like to have the Krebs' home at their disposal. No matter how many limitations, conditions, or restrictions they create, they cannot limit the use of this house enough to make it what it is not. It is not a school. And if classes are held, it is a school. It is not a bed and breakfast. It is not an event space. It is a private residence located on a private road in a quiet residential neighborhood, and it should stay as such. I believe it's far more important and your responsibility to preserve the integrity of our community, to preserve our property values, and the peaceful enjoyment of our homes and neighborhood. Mr. and Mrs. Krebs will not have to live with the consequences of this donation, nor will Mr. Scott, nor will anyone else here who has spoken in defense of this arrangement between the Krebs' family and Lake Forest College. Their quality of life will not be disturbed. Their property values will not decrease. They will not be forced to live within feet of a college facility. If Mr. and Mrs. Krebs want to donate their home to the college, of course, they may. But if they do, the house should be managed as any other home in Lake Forest and abide by the same requirements and restrictions as any other home in Lake Forest is required to do. It should never be turned into a public facility. Please do not grant this special use permit and ruin our neighborhood, our property values, and the quality of our life.
Yes, sir.
My name is Bob Pescway. I live at 172 Washington Road, which is Codfish Town in Lake Forest. Very few people know that, but I'll let you in on it. I don't have a written speech, and I don't have too much to say, excepting that I've fought with the college for a couple of years, a lot of years, about parking down on Washington Road. And each year, I have to go in and talk to the president of the school, and each year they tell me that it's not their problem. And the city says it's not their problem, that anybody can park on the roads. Now, this is Washington Road I'm talking about, up at college. What's going to happen down with this property? The police can't do anything about it. Those kids can park there, and they can't do a thing about it. And they're there without vehicle tags, they're from other states. We fix the roads. My other thing that I'd like to know is how many pieces of property does the college own that don't pay taxes anymore? And I never hear anything about how much taxes we're going to lose if this house gets off the road. Does anyone know?
We're not going to have back and forth. This is an opportunity for public testimony, so...
Well, I'm not public testimony, I'm just asking a question. If you know, it's never been told to the public. But I want to know. But here's another thing that you're going to find out, that when these kids go down there and use these classrooms, they're going to drink. And let me tell you, they're in neighborhoods where it shouldn't happen. I know that Cy Cathcart lives down, and Mrs. Cathcart, I think, still does live there. This is an atrocity. This should not happen. This isn't land for that. If they needed the property and needed something, why don't they get Bear College? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Veronica Duniclo. I just moved to 270 Overlook, so I'm four houses, about four houses down from Mr. and Mrs. Krebs. I wasn't planning on speaking. I came to try to hear out what's happening and to see what some of the benefits were to this. And growing up in Lake Forest, I really feel that I haven't had much of a community connection to Lake Forest College. And I don't, and one of the reasons we chose to move to where we live is because it was a residential community far enough away from Lake Forest College, far enough away from certain areas that we didn't want to be at. We're planning on growing our family. I have a little 17-month-old child that walks the streets. Ringwood is what I take to South Park every day. He doesn't like the stroller, he walks on the street. I don't want, I am opposing this. I know Mr. Krebs' intentions, you know, may seem great, but not for the residential community I just moved into a couple of months ago. If this was, if I would have known about this, we would not have purchased our house And that's, I just wanted to let you know that I'm opposing this, and thanks.
Thank you.
Before I give my name, I have to thank Ms. Cerniak for really getting my attention with her comment on the village's interest in structures not easily utilized by a family in today's world. My name is Craig Quackenbush. My wife, Eva, and I have lived at 51 South Mayflower Road, commonly known as the Tower House, for 29 years. The only house we can see looking to the south from our house when the leaves are down is Mr. and Mrs. Krebs' house. Our strong opposition to Krebs' petition is based on a somewhat longer and wider view of the issue after 29 years than the genuine concerns voiced so far on traffic, property values, the safety of our children, our grandchildren, and a sense of place. 28 years ago, John Vinci, the architect of the rehabilitation of Market Square, and I stood up in this room with a petition to salvage, restore, and preserve what had become a derelict property on the south end of Mayflower Road. We were out of this room in 15 minutes, and I've spent the last 28 years, my wife and I, doing our part to maintain the special character of the South Mayflower Road, Havenwood, and Overlook Drive neighborhood. We are today, if you think about it, the third and fourth generation of stewards of the far-sighted vision of the Henry Danglers, David Adler's, Francis Beedlers, Edward Ryerson's, Alfred Hamels, Leslie Wheeler's, Jens Jensen's, Potter Palmer's, and others who created this special neighborhood. In its day, it was the first planned neighborhood of pocket estates, which served as a model and an inspiration for other neighborhoods along the North Shore and elsewhere. And nothing stays the same. We know that. Havenwood was transformed from the largest of the Mayflower Road estates into a quiet, carefully, and tastefully laid-out neighborhood of single-family residences through the diligence of this board and the city of Lake Forest. The same is true for Overlook Drive and the infill of homes on Ringwood between Sheridan and Mayflower, which replaced post-war ranch homes that had seen better days. In sum, this residential neighborhood was conceived and executed through the wisdom of those who came before us, and has retained its character through the efforts and the love of place of its current residents and the professional oversight of this board, the Building Review Board, and the city of Lake Forest. Eva and I would like to see the tradition of this special neighborhood continue on to the benefit of those who will follow after us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Parkinson. I live with my wife, Marianne Wood, at 1130 Ashley Drive, which is on the corner of Ashley and Ringwood. We are one of the half-dozen closest neighbors to the Krebs' property, and within two or three weeks, when the leaves are off the trees, we'll have a very clear sight of that property, which will last for the next five or six months. We moved here in 1999 and selected a quiet residential area where we felt we could bring up our daughter, who's our junior in high school, and we would be able to enjoy the amenities of the area as it was when we moved in. We've seen changes since we moved there. Houses have filled in. The properties have generally gotten larger over time as that infill has occurred. But throughout the 14, nearly 15, years we've been here, the character of the neighborhoods remain the same. the character of the neighborhoods remain the same. We would ask you respectfully to work with us to maintain that character. I think it's clear from the extent to which the college and Mr. Krebs have been forced to go in their constraints and conditions that it's impossible to do that if the use of the Krebs' property changes as they've requested. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Carol Craigmyle. I live in the Havenwood area. My husband previously spoke. I had just a few thoughts. When you say the parties will be finished at 10:00 p.m., the lights and noise will be gone, what makes you think that's going to happen? I've been by colleges before, and I specifically did not want to live next to Lake Forest College. We were looking for homes, and I saw a nice one that I liked. And I said, "Ooh, I've been to colleges. I know what colleges are all about. I don't want to live near a college." So here we are in this beautiful Havenwood area that is unique, I think. And you want to put a college in there? A business in there? I said, "Well, anybody could open up a bed and breakfast." Then, I mean, if I want to... I have an extra bedroom and a bath. Can I, you know, put in a sign, "Carol's Red and Breakfast", and put a nice little sign on my house? How could you not let me do that? How could anybody in town not be able to do that if you're just going to plop something down, a business down, in somebody's neighborhood? So I really object to that. Let me see. What else was I going to talk about? I would say St. Mary's has been there since 1917. And also, it's close to the railroad tracks. It was close to the shopping. A great place to live if you need to take the train and other things, and the library, and other things like that. So I can't imagine property around St. Mary's going down. I certainly can imagine the value going down in our area. Let me see. It would be one thing if the Krebs' house was next to the college. I can certainly understand annexing something to the immediate property of the college. But this is a mile away. It has nothing to do with the college down there. It's a beautiful area. I walk it all the time, all year long. Trees are beautiful. The sounds are beautiful. The animals are grand. The air is wonderful. And it just would be a terrible wound on this property and this area to put a business in there, especially at college. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm Frank Biedler. I live at 20 South Stonegate Road. And I've spent my whole life either living on this property on Walden Road or adjoining it on Stonegate Road. And I've spent much of my life concerned about the preservation of the unique character of Walden Road. And my wife and I wrote a letter in support of the Krebs' Lake Forest College proposal. The one thing that I do want to add to that is I think that this is an extraordinary opportunity to preserve the character of Walden Road. I think that the detailed restrictions of an endowed program through Lake Forest College offers just an extraordinary opportunity. And that the... I would contend that, under the restrictions of residential zoning, almost anything can happen to a property. The house could be changed dramatically, even removed. That the very preservation of this neighborhood is much best... is best served by the Krebs' Lake Forest College proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jim Cathcart, 1000 Walden Road. I spoke last time, but I wanted to add some more ends here. I'm hearing about how, as a resident, we shouldn't argue that the value to the college of this gift is so magnificent that it should go through completely and without any worry. But there are residents that wonder about the value of this gift, to have the Krebs' Medieval Center situated on Walden Road. If the gift was made, has a residential house, and then sold, the Krebs' center could be on campus. And today, we might look and say, "Well, it's got unique because they can go visit this house that's got unique features to it." But what we're talking about is something in the future. We don't know the date. It's sort of unusual to have something in the future like this. It's almost like, as residents, we feel we have a sword hanging over our head because we have no date. Mr. Krebs here is seventy-one. Each year, I find that to be younger and younger. And I hope he lives to be very, very old, whatever that may be. So now, we're sitting here talking about something that's in the future. And as you're looking to sell your home, and somebody says, "What's going to happen in the future?", they don't know. This is a... then becomes an institutional area with restrictions that are subject to change. And we all know, whatever guarantees can be given by the college today, they can come back to the city council or somebody else and say, "Hey, for safety consains... concerns, for the health and welfare of our student body, for the protection of our student body, we have to do this." So we are requesting changes. So all these commitments that are nicely being made by the college are subject to change. I also wonder, they did the study, and I don't know what day it was, what cold rainy day it might have been, five hundred cars. We don't know how many of those cars traveled between 6:45 and 8:00 in the morning? And how many traveled between 5:00 and 6:30 in the evening? So during the day, how light was it? What we don't know is also, how many pedestrians were walking the street? Because there's no sidewalks. How many strollers were being pushed by families? How many young kids were on bikes riding on those streets during the day that these classes are going to start? We don't know that information. There's no study been done. We had a scientific study done on some cars counted for one day. I asked for this, and I look at it, has a safety end. And I was happy to hear that members of the board have actually driven the route and looked at it. I'm sure some of them probably came in from Mayflower Road coming south, recognized that when you get to Illinois, the road narrows. The sidewalks are gone. Ringwood has no sidewalks. It's a narrow road. You know, two cars passing, you've got to slow down and let them go by. Walden Road is a private driveway. It is a single lane. And it's heavily walked through by pedestrians who are going to Walden Bridge and enjoy that walk across Walden Bridge. I hope maybe some of you took the route from school, from the college, down Sheridan Road. Maybe you looked at yourself as maybe your student who's late. They're going off-campus now to a class, and they're late. They've jumped in their car. They're going down. They're going down Sheridan Road thirty-five miles an hour. They're not going way over the speed limit, but they're going thirty-five miles an hour. As they come to Ringwood, they just veer to the left. There's no stop. There's no nothing. They just veer to the left. The road narrows. There's no sidewalks. As they keep going down Ringwood Road, maybe if you're a college student, you're late, you want to look at your Texas, just to take a quick glance to see what's there. And as you do, you have to make that right turn on Ringwood, coming right around. And what do you run into? Maybe a mother with a stroller? Maybe a young kid on a bike? Is that what we're talking about here? And I wish the board to think about that because I think it's very important that we not look at just the benefit to the college that can be debated. Because in five years, ten years, maybe fifteen years, I hope, or longer, 3D television screens are in. Wouldn't it be better? And maybe schools are looking at it now, rather than be stuck with a facility and a building, isn't it better to have 3D TV? Being looked at by professor in Italy, showing you the magnificent structures, how they put it together, how it's actually done, showing you the beauty and the warts that go with any facility, rather than just taking you to look at an imitation. So I ask this board to look at it and look at the safety and look at the community as you have added traffic going through. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public test...
My name's Don Suter. I live at 1050 Walden Road. And I was here last month and had a chance to introduce myself and speak. And in the meantime, we've done a couple of things. I, with the help of my lawyer, sent a letter to you guys pointing out that we don't really feel that any of the criteria have been met, that have to be met in order to issue a special use permit. You've heard testimony tonight from a lot of different people as to different parts of that code. Jim Cathcart just talked about the safety and welfare, which is the criteria number one. I would spend... I'm just not going to reiterate the information that was in that four-page letter. But I would point out that in... from my standpoint, one of the most important one after safety is criteria number two, which relates to the impairment of our property values and to the right to, you know, quiet enjoyment and use of the neighborhood. And this clearly violates that right that we have. Those of us who chose to live in this neighborhood, in our case in particular, paid a great deal of money for that privacy and for that bucolic setting. If we wanted to buy a house the size of the one that we bought, there were many, many, many other options, a fraction of that price that we could have bought in Lake Forest. But we would never have gotten that kind of privacy and that kind of a bucolic setting, which is so unique to that neighborhood. And I think that informs all of us who live there and what you're sensing and what you're seeing from all of the neighbors in terms of the resistance to that is around that. It's the safety, and it's our property values. And, you know, it's... This is a use that does not belong in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And this is... It's not Sheridan Road. It's not Green Bay Road. It's, you know, it's not even Deer Path. This is a very quiet, private residential neighborhood. And to suggest that there are any set of conditions that would make it okay to plop an institutional use in the middle of that kind of a residential neighborhood is, in fact, an indecent proposal. And we put together, because I thought that it would be helpful for all of you to know how the neighbors feel about this. And we took the map provided by the city in its most recent notice. And several of the neighbors made phone calls. Some of them even were willing to walk around the neighborhood and ring some doorbells. And we... There are fifty-five homes in this general vicinity. There's a couple that aren't on the map because they... A couple of the people on Sheridan Road got cut off. But there are fifty-five homes that we identified. They're in the immediate vicinity of this neighborhood and who would be significantly impacted by this decision. And we endeavored to speak with each one of them. Of those fifty-five people, thirty-nine were adamantly opposed. One was adamantly in favor. Four identified themselves as really good friends of the Krebs, understood why we wouldn't want this here, understood why we would be upset, but would not sign the petition or agree to have their name listed here because of their relationship and friendship with the Krebs, which I can respect and appreciate. Another eight homes, we weren't able to reach anyone. Eleven total. Sorry, three houses that are on the market in that neighborhood and weren't able to get a hold of the seller. And another eight, they're identified by the question marks there, where we just haven't been able to contact them. Several people live out of town, and we couldn't get a hold of them. So of the people that we actually spoke to, thirty-nine no's, one yes, four friends of Krebs. I think you have a feel for how the neighbors feel about the indecent proposal. And I hope you respond accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Collins. I live at 1285 East Wesley Road, which would be the intersection of Wesley and Bluffs Edge, very close to the Walden Bridge. It's... I didn't expect to talk tonight, but I guess a little background. We bought our house, was in a state of disrepair, spent over a year renovating it in a beautiful area. And what struck us the most was that our home was in an area that was absolutely death silent, quiet, and serene. And we loved that. And when people come to our house, whether they be a worker to work on the house itself or friends, family, the first thing they notice is just how quiet and wonderful that area is. And it's very close to... Although I can't see that property from where I live. I do jog three times a week right by it because I love that loop that runs around the neighborhood there. And it is a very quiet and serene street. And it's very rare that I see car traffic in that area. One thing that surprised me tonight is that this was... It seemed almost, the way it was discussed, that it was something that was already in motion, that we are now comparing the uses of this property and the similarities of the uses of this property of an individual homeowner to that of a college use, discussing about how many nights you're allowed to stay in a house or how many guests you're allowed to stay in a house and for what time period. But what, I guess, shocks me is the most important point, that this is not going to be used by a resident. This is commercial use. And this is not a commercial area. And I think, although I'm not an attorney, by getting a special use permit, you would sidestep the legality of having a commercial use in a residential neighborhood. I think that, when you compare the number of cars going down the street, that doesn't exactly correctly identify the type of traffic that would come down through for a school usage. And I highly doubt that there's going to be, if you counted cars in a day, that you would find five and six people or eight people, or however many people fit in that van, they discussed, how many vehicles would come by with six or eight people in them? So I'm not concerned about the wear and tear on the street itself. I'm talking about the type of traffic that would come, kind of alluding to the discussion. Somebody mentioned about the type of traffic, the type of student... the student mentality versus the homeowner mentality driving down that street. I am very much against it. By the way, I'm very passionate about Lake Forest. Although I've only been here a short time, I've lived in the area my whole life. I am Ward Two Chair of the caucus. I'm somewhat passionate about keeping that area the same way that it was intended. And I don't think that giving the college a random home... and I do respect the donation in an area has anything to do with a residential use. So this is commercial, not residential, and I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public testimony? So it appears we have exhausted public testimony. And so public testimony will now be closed. So we're going to move on to cross-examination. We do have one filed by Mr. David Craigmyle? Craigmyle, 1041 Havenwood Lane. And he is requesting to cross-examine, I believe President Scott, but maybe that...
To be determined.
To be determined. So we don't have any of these, so we'd ask you to go ahead and commence your cross-examination.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott said that he'd obviously seen this, so he had his views ready when we were brought into it. These are some pictures that were taken of the house on Rosemary, which Mr. Scott told the board that it was being used as a warehouse and that that was not the plan and that they had plans to return it to residential use. If I understand the community comments up there from some people I know, it's been six years in this kind of shape. I'm sorry the rest of the audience doesn't have pictures. I know you folks do have them. And I want to ask President Scott if these are representative of what could happen at the Krebs' home if you were to acquire it. Five garbage cans in the front. It's obvious that that driveway, and I speak with honesty because I've had to do it myself, that needs to be totally torn up and redone because of what the trucks have done. At least twice a day, I'm told by the neighbors, trucks of this size are driving in and out of that community. The pictures also indicate that there's a tire in the front yard along with a broken screen. There's debris all over. I mean, it's a filthy-looking place, let's be very candid about it. It's a violation of the code unless you had approval to turn it into a warehouse, and maybe you did. But I kind of doubt that the community of Lake Forest would have allowed this had they known it was going on. Here's my question. And I am not an attorney, but I've been in business a long time, and I'm questioning, can you, as president, bind your successor? My understanding of corporate law is you cannot. I'm not sure you can bind the current trustees for the future. Now, one of the gentlemen up here talked about the fact that this is open-ended. This Krebs' home could be turned over, and I agree with the other comments. I hope Mr. Krebs has a long, long life, as most of us do. How do we know that this situation can't change radically? Let's say the university doesn't make well with this financially. Let's say the college gets into trouble financially. Is any board here going to not allow them to take action that might save possible bankruptcy? We can't predict that kind of future, except if this is approved, that's fait accompli. Then these changes can happen and the community is destroyed. Sir, can you bind a future president and board of trustees?
Do I wait for my turn?
Well, no, I'm cross-examining. That's the term that the chairman used. I'm asking for you to answer.
Do you want to give my mic? Go right ahead.
Isn't that what cross-examination is?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Glad you did that.
Should I stand here?
That's fine.
Right, so several things to say, Mr. Craig Mile, and thanks very much for the question, and I don't object to answering at all.
Good.
To take them in sort of the order you raised the issues again, I've already spoken to 831 Rosemary, and far from a warehouse. It is a residence that has been used for several years for storage of certain materials while we've been doing construction across the road on South Campus. As I said earlier, that project is over with now, and the house will be put to market this next year, which has been the plan for some time. The pictures that you show were taken on I don't know what day, but the garbage cans that you see in the driveway are routinely removed. They were washed, from what I understand was happening on that single day, they were washed and being cleaned and air drying, if you will, and they were removed later that afternoon. But it's hardly a common occurrence on that site. We have maintained the exterior of the property routinely and well, and will continue to do so until we sell it. In terms of my ability to bind my successor...
Well, I'm sorry, before you... Are you suggesting that the broken screen door was just missed that day?
When, when the screen on the door was broken, I cannot say, Mr. Craig Mile, but I know that it was not for a long period of time because we are on the property. So when it happened, I can't say. Obviously, you have a picture of a broken screen, and there it is. But again, from the street, on either side of the property, nothing of the sort that you depict in the close-up photographs is visible, and that's what's relevant in terms of how the property presents to the neighborhood. Let me go on, though, to answer your question secondly about my ability to bind my successor. It's not up to me. What binds the college is the special use permit that would be approved in this case, if in fact it is approved. Because the conditions in that special use permit have the force of law, become part of a city ordinance, and can be monitored, administered, challenged by the city if in fact they aren't met by the college. That's what the point of this whole exercise is, is to provide those conditions in a way that can be monitored and enforced by the city, as opposed to any set of occurrences that might happen for any private owner of that property. So that's how things get bound. But beyond that, you've heard not just from a trustee tonight, but there are several letters to the board from trustees saying that we are instituting a process at the college beyond the special use permit, from the college's own external auditors on an annual basis to ensure that we are in fact complying with the obligations we've agreed to here. So there's my answer, sir.
Well, we all live in the real world, and the fact is, for at least three years and possibly longer, sir, you have been violating the code in the condition of that home, and nothing's happened. Now, maybe it is theoretically a mistake on the part of the village that not doing something about that, but that is the fact. And the question of binding being totally a function of what the city does to monitor whether the school lives up to all of its obligations. Again, we're all practical people here, and that is not the real world. If you have a board of trustees who does not think that the ambience of that community is important, that's going to influence not only his thinking, but those of his subordinates. And we know how that works organizationally.
Mr. Craig Mile?
I don't know anything about colleges, but I know something about how business operates. And it takes its, it takes its leadership from the activities of the top leader.
Okay, I'm not sure what I'm responding to at this point, but I'll just say a final provision in the special use permit makes very clear that if the college were to make a decision, that it could not abide by the conditions and carry forward with a special use permit as approved, then the property, if we saw the property, it reverts to residential The special use permit runs only to Lake Forest College as long as we comply with its provisions. If we do not do so, then the city has enforcement rights, and if as a result of those enforcement rights, we decide to sell the property, it immediately becomes residential zoning again.
I understand that. But don't you agree that in terms of your management, you cannot bind a future president or a future board of trustees on how you will attempt to meet the requirements that have been given to the community if this was approved?
I've actually answered your question, Mr. Craig Mile.
I don't think you have, but we'll let it go at that. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Okay. So cross-examination is closed. We're going to take a quick, let's take a seven-minute recess, just to give everybody a chance to stretch their legs and get up for a minute. a chance to stretch their legs and get up for a minute.
Who's dinner tonight? I missed dinner. I skipped dinner. Wasn't.
Yeah. Oh.
So we're going to start to, no, Steve.
That's not good. Jesus. It was, we didn't.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So we're going to, we're going to kind of gather back, and final questions to the board, or from the board to the petitioner or his staff. Any final questions? Again, we'll have a chance for discussion, but I'm just trying to round up any.
I have one, one question.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask the petitioner, would you consider a petition that did not include holding classes at the Krebs residence?
You know, I think Steve would be the final arbiter on that, but my view is it doesn't make sense. I mean, if you look at the difference between an R4 zoning and what you can do with that, and what this special use permit changes, it's the classes, which we have limited considerably, and it's five unconnected people staying in the place. When you think of all the conditions that we have agreed to accept, the number of outside parties, the number of people at outside parties, no parking on the streets, the number of inside lectures, the number, the times that students will be there, students won't be there in the evening, they won't be there if they are, if there isn't a chaperone or someone with them. When you think of all those things we've agreed to, I think the reason we did it is primarily because of the classes and the, that we could have scholars, unconnected scholars living in the place. Now, if we don't, if we don't, let's just say that you decide this isn't the right thing to do, or let's say you decide it is and it goes to the city council, here's what we can do. We can have up to three people not related by blood or marriage to reside in a single-family house. The code does not regulate the number of guests, or the frequency or period on which they may stay in a home. The code does not establish a limit on the number of parties or events a homeowner or occupant may have, and the code does not establish a time at which parties or events in the home must end in the evening. We're giving up all of that, and I think one of the important things we want is the right to have a few classes there, two at the most a day, three, three courses a week. So I think that's important. I don't know. Steve?
No, I'll just add this to the, I think, the good comments that, that Rob Krebs just made. In the previous hearing, Michael Orr, our dean of the faculty and an art historian, spoke about the value of courses on the Renaissance within this environment. That's a value that cannot be replicated in any other, certainly anything that we have at the college, or any other college that I know that doesn't have a facility of this kind. So it is a unique proposition, and the ability to hold a limited number of classes, specifically limited number of classes in the facility is, is just a really enormous benefit to the future of the college and our art history and Renaissance studies program. So it would be a great sacrifice not to be able to do that.
Ask a question.
Yep.
Have you done any research into an alternative method of obtaining your ultimate objective, which is to have a Krebs Center for study by looking at the cost or looking at the market value of the house in terms of a, of a sale, and building something on or near campus that exactly replicates that structure, so that you could essentially end up with the same thing, but in a different location?
Mr. Plasker, that presumes several things. I mean, it presumes certainly, in the first place, the, the willingness of the generous donors in this case to take that route. Secondly, beyond that, which is a question that I can't answer, I don't believe that we could come close to replicating by building something new on or near campus, what this residence as it stands has to offer. I also think, if I can just add this, beyond the benefits to the college that we have just talked about, the strategy really has been animating this from the beginning as a preservation strategy for this property. I understand that there's disagreement about this, or different points of view on this, but I think there are solid reasons to understand why the approach we've taken really is one designed for the long term, to preserve this property as it stands for the benefit of the neighborhood and the community.
Although this is not a 100-year-old property, this is a property that was built in 2005, so this property is eight years old.
That's correct.
So you're talking about coming up with a strategy to preserve an eight-year-old property, as opposed to a 100-year-old property, which has obvious historical value.
Right.
Just a question. Could you, could you just elaborate a little bit on, on what you see as the value to the community and to Lake Forest of following this strategy as opposed to the obvious value to the college?
The value to the community?
Yes.
I believe it's a unique site as it stands, and I take exception actually to your description of the property. You're, you're right, it's only eight years old. But it's a, it's a uniquely designed property that does not have its like anywhere in Lake Forest, or anywhere on the North Shore that I'm aware of.
No, I understand that.
And its preservation, I think, is reason itself to go in this direction. So I think there's clear benefit through the preservation of the property to the neighborhood as it stands. I believe that preservation can be best guaranteed by this approach, as opposed to selling it to a private party who might do any number of things we've talked about at some length already. I think the benefit to the community beyond the preservation and what it does for the college and for our students, generations of students at the college, is the periodic opportunity it would provide for at least a limited number of local residents to come there and experience inside and on the grounds what our students will experience there as well. Again, subject to the, the time, place, and manner limitations that we've already agreed to, in the conditions that we proposed.
Yeah, I just, I really don't have an interest in giving the house to the college and having him turn around and sell it. The reason that I wanted to do this, and it goes back to preservation, the reason Mr. Quackenbrose can look across Mr. Suter's green lawn and see my house during the wintertime is because I paid $1.65 million to keep that a green lawn and to preserve the nature of the road. We've already said that there could have been five houses there, but there are two houses. And, and as far as replicating it, we were, we were just very fortunate. We, we bought Pietra Serena stone carved in Florence, terracotta floors from south of Florence, walnut doors and, and frames from Florence when the euro was 80 cents to the dollar. Today, it's a dollar 38, and inflation has gone up as well. You could not replicate, replicate the house. We put about a million dollars into the landscaping. Are we going to turn the landscaping up and take it somewhere else? I just don't think that makes sense. Now, what I can do, and I think I've said it three times now, I can give the house to Lake Forest College, and that's probably where we're headed. If we don't, and we'll just, we'll just work it out, and we'll see what happens if the zoning board doesn't think that this fits the criteria. In fact, I have an even better idea now, today I can loan, I can, I can rent it to them for a dollar a year, and they can do all the things that R4 requires, including, or lets them do, including putting five unrelated, or three unrelated people in the house.
Any other questions from the board? Final questions? All right, we've exhausted questions. Any petitioner rebuttal?
Just, just a few things, Chairman Frankson. I, I, I don't, I don't minimize the concerns that have been expressed by neighbors about our use of the property. I think they're legitimate concerns, I understand them, I understand why they've been raised, why they are being raised. We obviously have a different view about how to address them and how they come together. But to say that the future, the prospective sale of this property to a private buyer guarantees its future better than the conditions we have agreed to here, set in front of the zoning board, made still more explicit over the last month, to me makes, it just doesn't make sense. This is a situation in which the preservation of the property is, is as close to being guaranteed as it could be for a long, long period of time, because of the obligations the college has agreed to, and the resources that Mr. and Mrs. Krebs have provided us to support those guarantees. This map is important, but it also only shows a portion of the community, even the community close to the site. I know that you have a map in the zoning board that shows a larger version, and you'll see on that larger map where a number of properties are inhabited by people who support the project. There are also people who have written in from across the city who support the project as a benefit to the community, and their views are important in this as well. Finally, the college is a member of the community too, and I believe value to the, value to the college is not an illegitimate factor for consideration in this analysis. The traffic study that we conducted, and for that matter, the look that we took at a number of properties that I spoke of earlier, close to Ragdale, to St. Mary's School, to Country Day, et cetera, the traffic study and that research are really simply intended to refute the idea that has been raised on a number of occasions without anything really behind it, that necessarily there can be no appreciation of properties near a facility like this one, and that there is simply no traffic in the area. We counted cars. We didn't do more of an analysis than that, but we counted cars and we came up with 524 cars in the course of a day. We took the look at the different properties that we took to show that appreciation is not only possible, but in fact, it exceeds averages in the quadrants of the city where those properties are located. I'll end simply by saying, a number of continuing comments have been made tonight about Walden Road, and I don't know what else we could do to preserve Walden Road beyond saying we're not going to use it. We took that very seriously, we made that decision, we will not use Walden Road. So I honestly think to close, we have done everything we could possibly do to meet condition, to meet objections, concerns that are understandable, but to meet them rationally and reasonably. I think we've done that, and I believe the entire proposal before you can end up being a win-win for everyone in the community. So with that, thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Krebs.
At the end of last meeting, I, I listened very carefully to your comments and concerns, and what things you thought were troublesome as far as the criteria went, that you have to decide is either met or not met. And as I remember, there were three particular criteria. The first one is that this special use permit would not be detrimental or endanger public safety, morals, comfort, or the general welfare. So what have we done about that? The biggest public safety concern, and Jim Cathcart pointed that out, are the number of people, you know, we, we didn't get our students out and count the number of people that walk down Ringwood Road, but my guess on a Saturday when the sun is shining, there's probably 100 people during the day. And they are doing things like pushing baby strollers, and jogging, and walking their dogs, and riding bicycles, or taking the traffic off Walden Road. The other interesting thing about our house is that, you know, it's the first house on Walden Road. Once you get in our driveway, my, my guess is people who are living further down in Walden Road, and we do have one person who hasn't come here, but who does support our request, people won't even know if we, if a car did go in Walden Road, that it was being used. My guess is the, the Suters and the Cathcart's and, and Corliss Miller don't even know when the mayor, any truck drives into our driveway to, to do our lawn. So we took the traffic off Walden Road, and as, as Steve said, this was not, this was a cost-effective traffic study, that's using Lake Forest College students. It wasn't scientific, we just wanted to know, because everybody's talking about the traffic, how many people drive down Ringwood from 7:00 a.m. till 7:00 p.m.? And the answer was in one day, on a Monday, not an unusual day at all. It was over 500, over 500 cars went down there. Now, we've had a big discussion about the number, the additional traffic, and in the scheme of things, it's really not very much. So I don't think that as far as public safety goes, it's a concern. The other thing we've said is, and this, I, we almost had one of these maps made ourselves, I wish we had, but we can use this one. Our shuttles won't go beyond the driveway, they won't go up that whole area on Ringwood, they won't go into Havenwood, and they won't go down Walden Road. If you look at the people in Havenwood, which at one time was a seminary, and was used for a purpose not unlike what we're talking about, probably a lot more intense than what we're talking about, the people along Sheridan, on the part of, of Havenwood, they probably got 1,500 cars a day going by them on their backyards, and my guess is most of them don't even drive down to where we go. If they want to go to town, if they want to go to 41, they go up, they go up onto Sheridan, and then, and then out Wesley, or down Sheridan to Deer Path and into town. Those people will hardly ever even know that the college is using the facility. And the same thing is pretty much true for the people on Ringwood, because we won't go beyond that point. So the people who are going to be the most impacted are the people on that piece of Ringwood from Sheridan down to Mayflower. One of them just testified today, the one who's probably impacted the most, that he supports this, in fact, he let us use our back, his backyard to count the cars, but we did it. And across the street from him, it doesn't show on that map, it's not, not correct. We have an approval from the, the person on the opposite side of the road, also wrote a letter in support of our proposal. And then when we have people come from Wesley, I mean, they might as well live in Westlake Forest, because you can't take a car and go across, go down Walden Road, so they won't even know that this is going on. The, as far as morals go, and we've said it time and time again, this is not a coed dorm, this is, this is a scholarly center, there will be no, no kids staying overnight, there will be nobody there, no, no student without a chaperone, we've limited, limited the classes, so I don't think that's a, and then we've limited all the functions as well, and who can attend those functions? As far as the general welfare, I don't know, the general welfare, to me, that means not just the neighborhood, but the whole city. We, we talked about how important Lake Forest College is, 1,600 students, 400 people and faculty, how much money is spent in, in Lake Forest as a result of all that. A former mayor was here and said, well, you had one college and it went belly up, we've got to make sure that this one doesn't go belly up. It's a very important employer and a very important part of Lake Forest. The other thing, just a little thing, that one of the conditions that we agreed to now, put in new, is that the Lake Forest College public safety people will come check the place at night. Now, they'll do it through Ringwood, they won't come down Walden Road, but there will be a little bit more surveillance in the area in night, and, and that can't be all bad at all. So that was the one thing that concerned you. The other was that it's not injurious, injurious or, affects the enjoyment of the property owners, or substantially, and I underline that because that's what, that's what your criteria is, diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. I think as far as the enjoyment goes, getting off Walden Road, that is the place that everybody should be the most concerned about, because it is a, it's kind of funny, it's a, it's a private road, but it's a public road. It's private, just like, like Corliss said, in that we pay, we just repaved it. It's narrow, there are no sidewalks, but there's still, it's, it's a great place for all the people of Lake Forest to come walk, take a walk, enjoy it, and, and I think what we've done, actually, we'll, we'll keep it that way. Now, the property values, I think Steve said this, I mean, we, we can't prove the future, and all we were trying to do was point out, there are places here in Lake Forest where there are institutions that will be substantially more active than ours, where property values have gone up. The traffic study and that research are really simply intended to refute the idea that has been raised on a number of occasions without anything really behind it, that necessarily there can be no appreciation of properties near a facility like this one, and that there is simply no traffic in the area. We counted cars. We didn't do more of an analysis than that, but we counted cars and we came up with 524 cars in the course of a day. We took the look at the different properties that we took to show that appreciation is not only possible, but in fact, it exceeds averages in the quadrants of the city where those properties are located. I'll end simply by saying, a number of continuing comments have been made tonight about Walden Road, and I don't know what else we could do to preserve Walden Road beyond saying, "We're not going to use it." We took that very seriously. We made that decision. We will not use Walden Road. So, I honestly think to close, we have done everything we could possibly do to meet objections, concerns that are understandable, but to meet them rationally and reasonably. I think we've done that, and I believe the entire proposal before you can end up being a win-win for everyone in the community. So with that, thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Krebs.
At the end of last meeting, I listened very carefully to your comments and concerns and what things you thought were troublesome as far as the criteria went, that you have to decide is either met or not met. And as I remember, there were three particular criteria. The first one is that the special use permit would not be detrimental or endanger public safety, morals, comfort, or the general welfare. So what have we done about that? The biggest public safety concern, and Jim Cathcart pointed that out, are the number of people. You know, we didn't get our students out and count the number of people that walk down Ringwood Road, but my guess on a Saturday when the sun is shining, there's probably 100 people during the day. And they are doing things like pushing baby strollers, and jogging, and walking their dogs, and riding bicycles, or taking the traffic off Walden Road. The other interesting thing about our house is that, you know, it's the first house on Walden Road. Once you get in our driveway, my guess is people who are living further down in Walden Road, and we do have one person who hasn't come here, but who does support our request, people won't even know if a car did go in Walden Road, that it was being used. My guess is the Sooters and the Cathcart's and Carlos Miller don't even know when the mayor, any truck drives into our driveway to do our lawn. So we took the traffic off Walden Road, and as Steve said, this was not, this was a cost-effective traffic study, using Lake Forest College students. It wasn't scientific. We just wanted to know, because everybody's talking about the traffic, how many people drive down Ringwood from 7:00 a.m. till 7:00 p.m.? And the answer was in one day, on a Monday, not an unusual day at all. It was over 500, over 500 cars went down there. Now, we've had a big discussion about the number, the additional traffic, and in the scheme of things, it's really not very much. So I don't think that as far as public safety goes, it's a concern. The other thing we've said is, and this, we almost had one of these maps made ourselves, I wish we had, but we can use this one. Our shuttles won't go beyond the driveway. They won't go up that whole area on Ringwood, they won't go into Havenwood, and they won't go down Walden Road. If you look at the people in Havenwood, which at one time was a cemetery, and was used for a purpose not unlike what we're talking about, probably a lot more intense than what we're talking about, the people along Sheridan, on the part of Havenwood, they probably got 1,500 cars a day going by them on their backyards, and my guess is, most of them don't even drive down to where we go. If they want to go to town, if they want to go to 41, they go up, they go up onto Sheridan, and then out Wesley, or down Sheridan to Deer Path and into town. Those people will hardly ever even know that the college is using the facility. And the same thing is pretty much true for the people on Ringwood, because we won't go beyond that point. So the people who are going to be the most impacted are the people on that piece of Ringwood from Sheridan down to Mayflower. One of them just testified today, the one who's probably impacted the most, that he supports this, in fact, he let us use his backyard to count the cars, but he did it. And across the street from him, it doesn't show on that map, it's not correct. We have an approval from the person on the opposite side of the road, also wrote a letter in support of our proposal. And then when we have people come from Wesley, I mean, they might as well live in Westlake Forest, because you can't take a car and go across, go down Walden Road, so they won't even know that this is going on. As far as morals go, and we've said it time and time again, this is not a coed dorm. This is just a scholarly center. There will be no kids staying overnight, there will be nobody there, no student without a chaperone. We've limited the classes, so I don't think that's a, and then we've limited all the functions as well, and who can attend those functions? As far as the general welfare, I don't know, the general welfare, to me, that means not just the neighborhood, but the whole city. We talked about how important Lake Forest College is, 1,600 students, 400 people and faculty, how much money is spent in Lake Forest as a result of all that. A former mayor was here and said, "Well, you had one college and it went belly up. We've got to make sure that this one doesn't go belly up. It's a very important employer and a very important part of Lake Forest." The other thing, just a little thing, that one of the conditions that we agreed to now, putting new, is that the Lake Forest College public safety people will come check the place at night. Now, they'll do it through Ringwood, they won't come down Walden Road, but there will be a little bit more surveillance in the area in night, and that can't be all bad at all. So that was the one thing that concerned you. The other was that it's not injurious, injurious or affects the enjoyment of the property owners or substantially, and I underline that because that's what, that's what your criteria is, diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. I think as far as the enjoyment goes, getting off Walden Road, that is the place that everybody should be the most concerned about, because it is a, it's kind of funny, it's a private road, but it's a public road. It's private, just like Carlos said, in that we pay, we just repaved it. It's narrow, there are no sidewalks, but there's still, it's a great place for all the people of Lake Forest to come walk, take a walk, enjoy it, and I think what we've done, actually, we'll keep it that way. Now, the property values, I think Steve said this, I mean, we can't prove the future, and all we were trying to do was point out, there are places here in Lake Forest where there are institutions that will be substantially more active than ours, where property values have gone up faster than property values in that particular quadrant of the city. So that doesn't seem to have impeded that from happening. The last thing, adequate measures have been provided for ingress and egress, so designed to minimize traffic congestion in public streets, and we've talked about that. Again, I could point to the map and show you where the traffic is going to go. It won't be on Walden Road, it won't be on, be beyond Ringwood Road. There are already a large number of cars using the area that the Lake Forest College will use. So in summary, I believe we have done a reasonable, respectful job in telling you why this is good, not just for the city or the college, but for the neighborhood as well. And I think it presents a balance between I just putting it in my will, college one day, and of course, if I did that, I would tell, I would tell everybody, maybe the next Capitol campaign, we'd announce that, okay, this house is going to go to the college, the art collection's going to go to the college, there's going to be a $5 million endowment. So if there's any specter about what might happen, it'll be there, you know, if there's any concern. I think it's better to be there, and oh, by the way, there's a special use permit, which was part of law, that has to be governed, has to be abided by, and so if somebody has a question, and they say that this is why, this is not bad at all, it's good. It maintains and preserves a beautiful house on a beautiful street in a way that is good for the neighborhood and for the city. So I would, I appreciate your patience, I appreciate your interest, and I would just ask you to grant the special use, or recommend that the special use permit be approved so we can go to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kathy, any wrap-up?
Just a couple comments. All of the concerns that have been raised, as everyone has said, are legitimate. The experience of the city is that those types of concerns can and have been addressed in other situations where there are adjacencies between non-residential uses, whether they be churches, private clubs, schools, businesses, unique uses like Grove Campus or Elloa Farm. All of those uses, all of those same issues were raised, and today, those uses coexist with the surrounding residential neighborhood. Lake Forest does have a history of doing things differently. Lake Forest does have a history of establishing uses that distinguish neighborhoods and distinguish the city from other communities. What's proposed tonight is consistent with that history. I would just offer, if you choose to move forward, there were a couple items mentioned as suggestions for enhancing the conditions. Those were all related to classes, specifically stating in the conditions that no classes would be held on weekends, or no classes could be held on weekends, the hours of classes be limited from 9 until 4, and stipulated, stipulating that only one class could be held at the residence at a time. Thank you.
All right. Okay, now to the fun part. Board discussion and comment, and I want this board to be able to have some good discussion about this, because after this, it's back to new garages and dormers, so. So, and we don't have to, I mean, this can be free-flowing. It doesn't have to be, you know, come on down and then we're, nobody has a chance to have it, say anything else. I guess I would, just in the context of where we're at and what we're asked to do, I would tell the board that we have a job tonight specifically under the criteria of a special use permit. We heard a lot of good testimony, man, I mean, powerful testimony. Tonight, we can do, only do our job, whatever that is. If it goes on beyond here, the city council will do their job, whatever, you know, whatever they think their job is. So who would like to start?
I'll start.
And I think it's okay to challenge each other a little bit, too, one way or the other, so.
That's good.
That's coming.
Certainly. You know, I'm not sure this would really have much impact to the neighborhood from a day-to-day standpoint or not. The one thing that I'm somewhat concerned about is the possible impact to the property values of the homes close by. I'm not sure that it would, but I'm not sure that it wouldn't. And because I'm not sure that it wouldn't, that's really, that's a concern. I don't know what everybody else thinks, but.
So Jay, just in that context, you're concerned that it might substantially diminish or impair property values as the code is written?
Yeah, if somebody was coming in to buy the property, and then they heard, oh, the house next door is part of the college, you know, they hold some classes there, this and that, whatever. Some people, I think, might get a little scared by that, because they hadn't lived there to really see, maybe it's not a problem, maybe it's okay, but they're from out of town, or whatever, and they come in, and it's this unbelievably beautiful neighborhood, they're spending a fortune to purchase, and they're not quite sure what this means. Special use permit, does it really mean belongs to the college, they hold classes? I think it could scare some people.
Just to add another element to that is the concept of an uncertain future that was raised by one of the members of the public. The fact that this would not occur for an uncertain period of time, and we wouldn't be able to see an outcome that could ultimately comfort or resolve the issue for the neighborhood, something that'll be hanging out there for a number of years, I presume, and supplements what Jay just said, so.
You've had two people testify tonight, just as a note of fact, that, that one said, "We wouldn't have bought a house in that neighborhood had we known that this was going to be there." And another who said, "We paid a ridiculous amount," ridiculous, spy word, "a large amount of money for a house that's similar in size to a house we could have bought somewhere else, because we wanted it to be quiet and pristine," and so on and so forth. That just sort of speaks to the, it's an unknown, speaks to the same point about what are property values, there's, what are they for the people who bought there, knowing what the neighborhood was like when they bought, and what does it do to their property values going forward? I think it's unknown. I don't think anybody can predict with any certainty, and I think it's definitely something to consider.
So Rich, let me, let me challenge on that just a little bit. One of the concerns, or a common concern we heard, was that the people in the surrounding neighborhood have, they bought their homes because they want to live in a quiet neighborhood, they want to live in a, in a private setting. Would this, with this petition and this special use permit, would it change that privacy, that quiet aspect?
Not, not sure. Don't know.
I think that's a very good question, Mr. Chairman. You know, when I, when I ponder that, that very question, and staff put it very similarly to the way you just put it, the key question is whether the proposed use can be operated in a manner that is consistent with and not disruptive to the residential character of the area. I think that's, that's very well put. We've gained some more information this evening, and I think the petitioner's been forthcoming in trying to place more restrictions on the circulation that would, that might come to be as a result of this petition being granted. If I'm doing the math right, you know, if they're doing three to nine classes per week, and they're going to place a cap of 20 students as a max, and we took that to the max, we'd have anywhere from 60 to 180 persons per week visiting this residence, and if they used vans, it'd be seven to 22 van trips per week. Now, this is the first time I've had an opportunity to consider some kind of definite or discreet concept of what kind of circulation this petition might engender, and so now I have to digest that and ask myself, does that disrupt the residential character of the area?
Well, you know what, and I suppose to the defense of that calculation, those vans and those cars are free to drive up and down Ringwood now, and on Sheridan Road now, they're just not pulling into the Krebs residence. And so it's a, who knows?
Correct.
And let's also add into the equation, we're talking about time here, that's present day. Where are we 10 years from now, 15 years from now, 20 years from now? What does that picture look like?
Well, I think it's the same picture, the same restrictions are going to be.
But mathematically, in terms of traffic, mathematically, in terms of...
There may not be any traffic.
You know what, they took the traffic sample on a single day, where they counted 500 cars. Maybe that was an aberration, and maybe normal traffic on a single day for the other four days is 700 cars. So that if you take the average of five days, and you come up with an extra 100 cars a day, maybe there's no impact. I mean, we just don't know. It's hard to say.
See, I... The traffic piece is a big one, obviously, and I was...
And safety.
Well, I mean...
Hand in hand.
Okay, let me finish my thought.
Okay.
The, you know, I was doing the math, okay, you have a couple of classes a day, a couple of vans, few cars, the professor goes to Jewel, I don't know what that equates to, you know, maybe that's, is it 10 trips a day tops, coming back to and from? I think you have to, you look at these standards, and somehow, you've got to put a reasonable standard on all of these. If you were to, you can't say, "Well, there's one more car a day, therefore, it's more dangerous." Nope, got to toss it out, that's not reasonable. There's 100 more cars a day? Okay, that's too many. So somewhere between 1 and 100, you've got to, you've got to come up with a decision as to X amount of cars, to the best of our knowledge, X amount of cars are going to be coming and going to this facility. Is that injurious, wherever it is, injurious to the, no, 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 where is it? Adequate measures, ingress, egress, to minimize traffic congestion, that kind of connects up to number one, too. I don't know, I don't have a lot of heartburn if you're considering a dozen extra cars a day on top of the 500 that are coming to and from that, that current intersection. But again, we don't know what that is, but from the facts and the data that we're hearing, to me, it sounds like it might be a reasonable amount to fit under this criteria. Sam?
I look at the, the difference between Mr. Krebs outright donating or renting his home to the college and having a special use permit. And I think we can all see that a special use permit is, is better for the community at large because of the limits it places over and above what our four residential's criteria has. The only difference being the classes. Now, that's where I get hung up, is the classes. If you do study abroad and go to Florence, you don't go to the Uffizi every day to study what's in the Uffizi, but you have classroom, and then you go to the, to the place and see the works of art and what's ever going on. To have it every day in the, in the residence is my hang-up about it. If it wasn't for that, I would approve the special use permit, only because it's better than not, than not having any restrictions at all.
So what do you...
The testimony is done, and this is not going to happen, unless the classes are going to take place.
I understand that. What I'm saying is, the classes that, if we could cut back even more, the amount of classes that happen per week in that area, were, because everybody, the recurrent theme that everybody talks about is traffic, traffic, people, more people being brought in. I mean, we've had people talk from other ends of town about the, about the traffic, and they don't even live there, but the recurrent thing, theme of the residence is that there's extra traffic, and for people walking, and they've already taken care of no traffic on Walden Lane, and very limited traffic on Ringwood Road, just to Mr. Krebs' driveway.
So, so Sam, let me...
So what I'm getting at is, reduce the class, the number of classes that are in the, that are held in the house on a weekly basis, more than what they are in the way the permit is written as it is.
Does that then meet the criteria? All seven criteria?
Well, he's saying it might, if you restrict the class.
I'm with Sam on this one.
But, Sam, let me, let me give you, let me give you a little, okay, just, I'm going to challenge you a little bit on that. I live near the college, not quite in this neighborhood, a little different neighborhood, Codfish Town, as Mr. Pasquaz would refer to it. I can tell you the issues of living near a college. Wonderful institution, football games, rah-rah, that's, that's all good, but the issues are traffic, speeding cars down the street, students in rental houses, houses that might be controlled by the college or rented by students that are not kept up as they should be, inconsistent with other neighbors, beer cans, and, you know, kids going up and down the street at night at parties, doing things that college kids do. Those are the issues that I can tell you would be a burden on a neighborhood. That doesn't seem to be part of this.
No, it does not. And they've limited that in their, on how many...
And I, I got to tell you something, the classes, that was about the last thing that concerned me, but you, you guys obviously feel a little differently.
I think it's the most important, because it generates the most circulation.
I think that's what's important, because that's the difference between a special use permit and Mr. Krebs outright giving his residence to the college, that and two more people can, that are unrelated, living in the house. Those are the only two things. Mr. Krebs was, he pointed it out very clearly to us. So which is it? Would you rather have the restrictions of a special use permit, or no restrictions at all that we can even talk about? I mean, events that could happen to beyond 10:00 p.m. at night?
And more than four.
And more than four, and more than 10 in a year. Do you see?
Yeah.
Do you see what I'm getting at? So, and the only thing that's getting in my way, there's the only two, you know, I have no problem with the number of people that can live there as long as it's monitored and by the college, so that it keeps, keeps the house in the, in the way that it is now. But the number of classes that are held per week is what hangs up, hangs me up.
Interesting.
And that's because you're fearful of the additional traffic, whatever that might be?
I just don't, I don't feel in my heart that, that there needs to be that many classes in that home in a, in a particular week. I could see...
Because it sort of makes it like an extended classroom facility.
One, two, or three, you know, one, two, or three through the course of the week, but not two, or two a day.
Also, it's the number of people that are circulating through the home.
Exactly.
In a very quiet residential neighborhood. Again, 60 to 180 people a week.
Well, it really sort of redefines the use when you schedule regular classes.
It doesn't happen in your home. It doesn't happen to your next-door neighbor.
It does change kind of the texture of what's going on there. So if it's, that's a very good point. So if there were more limited special-type classes there that, that weren't on a scheduled regular basis, maybe that would make it easier and more, more palatable to the people who live around there, because after all, we're trying to get everybody to agree, if we can. If we could, that's what we try to do.
Well, in, to your point, it's difficult to get everybody to agree on, on a specific thing, but we can come to a consensus that everybody can live with.
So let me, let me, okay.
Well, so I guess then the question is, it's a rhetorical question, if, if Mr. Krebs and Mr. Scott said, "We're not going to have classes there at all. We're just going to have special events." I'm not suggesting you do that.
Yeah, Rich, I think we kind of went there earlier.
I'm just trying to define how much opposition would there...
We don't need to rehash that.
Yeah, he already pushed back.
So let me, let me maybe bring it to the board in this context, okay, you've got classes. Okay, you've got classes. Which one of these seven does, does the, how many classes a day? Two, what?
Two to three.
Two to three. Which one of these numbers, the seven criteria do those two to three classes violate?
Two.
Two?
One and two.
One and two.
One and two.
I think that the class is the scary thing to a potential buyer. I don't really think the classes are gonna create a big traffic problem. Maybe it would, but I don't think what they're talking about would be terribly-
We already kind of counted up the cars and, and, I mean, we don't know the number, but we kind of have a feel for how many vehicles.
It's also an issue of the number of people going through. Again, imagine living next door to a property that has 60 to 180 people moving through, through the home every week.
Let's say you're looking at a house in the neighborhood and you, you know that the, that the college controls the building and you say to somebody, well, what do they do there? Somebody says, well, it's, it's a combination classroom facility and a special use. They have events and functions and fundraisers, whatever they have there. And you say, how many classes a week do they have there? How many people are there? 180 roughly every week. Would it be different for you if they said, oh, they have two or three classes there a week, maybe 30, 40 people? Would that change your mind? Just put yourself in the buyer's shoes? I don't know.
It's a good question, Rich. I haven't really had time to-
Digest it.
Digest it completely because it's new information. It came to me this evening, you know?
Yeah, I don't know.
But I, but that, but I do share conceptually Sam's concern about classes. That's the concern. I think I would vote approval unequivocally if there were no classes. Now, and I understand, Rich, that they want classes. So, you know, is there some level at which an accommodation could be reached?
I tell you, well, you know, I don't know that we're going there because they've, you know, we had some back and forth dialogue. I mean, I can tell you that the, you've got, I mean, let's call it what it is. You've got a fantastic proposition of this asset that's gonna have this-
Meaningful.
No. Find the right word for me, Stu, if you're gonna give them to me. Endowment to maintain this thing, art history, scholarly, with all this art in it. To me, it was about the last concern of all the things on the criteria that I-
Do you think it's the last concern of the people who live in the neighborhood?
If I was, if I was living next door and I had an asset like that with high-end college classes, art history, no less, and it, it works for me. I don't live there, but it works for me.
But there's another issue.
With nobody's talking about. I'm sorry. There's another issue nobody's talking about, and that's issue number two. I, where is the evidence on substantially?
The best evidence that we have, yeah.
That's the question. That's one of the requirements.
That's issue number two. We have to consider that. If we don't consider that, we're not doing our job. Sure, absolutely. You have to consider all, all seven.
All seven.
All seven. And I, that's a tough one.
It's a tough one because a lot of things affect property values, not just something like this. A future neighbor, I mean, aside from this future neighbor, could affect your property values, plus or minus. It changes every day.
And a lot of it's just perception of what the potential buyer might-
Right.
Might perceive based on what's going on.
I have to bring it up again. It's gonna happen whether we give them a special use permit or not. So is it better to go unregulated or with regulations?
Yeah, you know, I-
And besides, I don't think that's our job.
It's not. We, we are asked to, again, here come the words, Stu. Just let me get them out. We're asked to evaluate the petition that's in front of us. And if you want to consider, well, if we don't do this, it might, it might be, you know, rented for a dollar. I mean, that, I guess you could consider that, but I don't think that's our job here tonight. It's, so I suppose we could kind of come to a conclusion on this. I think, I think we've heard everything we need to hear and I don't know that there's really a reason to table the matter or continue it unless somebody else here feels really strongly about that, that we're going to hear more. President Scott, I'm sorry, you have a brief comment?
Can you hold the audience talking to you?
You better be careful.
No, all right, no, we're not gonna do that. Yeah, you're right. Okay, so that is where we are. If somebody would like to make a motion and one way or another, I mean-
Let's just talk for a second about the possibility of a continuance. Just, just for the sake of argument. I'm not necessarily advocating one, but I'd say some new information came into being this evening. I mean, I got a much better handle on what traffic circulation would be. It's also possible that the petitioner could meet with the neighbors formally to discuss the possibility of class reduction, if that's a viable option in their eyes or not. But if, I will tell you that if the petition stands as it's currently structured, I will vote against it. Because I just can't, I'm not comfortable yet that this doesn't have a disruptive impact on the neighborhood. And I can only, in good conscience, place myself in a next door neighbor situation and, and consider the possibility of 60 to 100 people going through the house next door to me on a daily, on a, on a weekly basis. And, you know, 7 to 22 vehicles on a weekly basis going in and out of that residence. And I just wouldn't, I wouldn't like it.
Okay, all right.
I would tend to agree with, with Mr. Culberson that reduction of classes in the, in the facility would, would change my mind.
In favor of the project.
Well, we're still, little bit of discussion here.
Oh, okay.
Anybody else want to kind of show the cards, what they feel, you know?
Chairman Frankson, I, I might just offer. I have heard some focused discussion around the classes. If, if that is something that the board thinks is worth exploring as far as the number of classes or I think board members, Zicorelli talked about, could classes be held somewhere else? And this is a special opportunity that occurs so many times, a term that classes are held here. If that is something you think is worth exploring, we could certainly do that. That just seemed to be one piece that seemed to have a fair amount of interest.
Is there, is there interest on the board to-
I think I have interest in that.
I have interest in that as well.
I don't know that the petitioner is gonna be interested in it, but I think that that would do a lot to alleviate the fears of the unknown that people are expressing in terms of all the changes they expect to happen in the neighborhood, traffic, the property values, all those things. I think the, you can minimize the classroom activity and not have it become a classroom facility. I think that goes a long way for a lot of people. I think it would for me.
But does minimizing the classroom activities still meet the seven objectives?
I don't know. I'm not sure.
And not to be, maybe not to be decided here tonight. And if, if that's, if that's where the board is headed, it would seem that we would possibly table the matter and not, not necessarily continue it to a date certain. So, is that what I'm hearing? Is that something that somebody would like to make a motion on?
That would be my inclination is, and there's another aspect here. There's, this, there's not a gun to our head to do this today or even next month. I mean, I know we'd like to get this settled once and for all, but this after all is a 10-year or sometime uncertain prospect in the future. So I think we, I think we do need to be very careful here and deliberative and, and give the petitioner and staff and ourselves some opportunity to consider some other alternatives if the, if the class, the amount of classes and the class sizes are an issue.
Okay. So I think I'm hearing that the board or members of the board-
Speak your piece.
I'll speak my piece. Go ahead. Why not?
Because, because the petitioner has already expressed his position before this board. He's not interested in doing it or he will donate it or rent it. That's what I heard.
Okay.
Well, I think the petitioner has changed his view from the last meeting to this one as far as things that were said before and that he compromised on.
But my understanding is that the reasons for adjournment are that to table this is based upon what's troubling some of my board members here is the fellow board members is the issue of the classes. And I think that answer has been given. What are we going to learn between now and the next meeting or the meeting after that with respect to the classes? Classes are going to be held there. This is, this is an academic, this is a, an extension of the college for purposes of- Of instruction in addition to-
So let me, let me put it this way, and anybody can make a motion, whichever way they want to go. But what I, what I think I heard was that there is not support tonight for the special use permit, but I thought, I heard from several members that if there was additional discussion on the class issue, it might worth be discussing further. Now, there may not be any change from what we've heard tonight. And it may just, you know, belong the issue. So, you know, I guess we could go either way. But if, if the board, as a consensus, would like to table the matter, anybody can make a motion to table the matter. If somebody would like to try and close it out, you could do that as well. But we probably, we probably ought to put a motion up that's gonna have-
Well, so I have a follow-up question to that. And is it possible, since really the ultimate objective here is to create a solution where both the neighbors and the Krebs and the college find some common ground? If that's possible, and I'm not sure it is. But we're all talking about the possibility that if we reduce the number of classes, that might be palatable to us. But we're not the ones that live there generally. So that, I guess I'm wondering if there is a way to spend a little more time to find out if a situation like that is more acceptable to the neighbors who have opposed and could also be acceptable to Mr. Krebs and the college before we just put a cover on it and say, this is what we're gonna do. And I'm not interested in dragging it out any longer than, than it has to be. But as Member Culberson said, this is a decision that's gonna impact a lot of people for a long time, I think. And this, if the special use permit is passed, this is gonna be a classroom building.
But even if we get past the dialogue of class size, does it still meet the criteria of the ZBA?
That's for all of us to decide.
Wait, we don't know yet. We haven't voted.
But I just wonder if it's worth, you know, is it, do we have the right to, if we were to postpone this, do we have the right to sit with the neighbors who have spent a lot of hours sitting in this room over a couple of nights to try to figure out what, what their common ground could be? They may all decide, you know what? We don't want it, period.
Probably not the board.
They may all decide, forget it, we just don't want it. And then, then we know. But they all, they might also decide, you know what? If we can minimize the classroom part of this, maybe that's okay. I don't know.
Okay. So why don't we, go ahead.
Procedurally, the, the board members cannot meet outside of this forum. What, what you could do to focus on, on the issue of classes is you could close the public hearing except for discussion about the number, the size, the frequency of classes and, and ask for input from the petitioner to see if that's even accept, any change to the class schedule is acceptable or not and to invite comments from the neighbors with respect to classes.
We could do that now.
No, you've, you've gotten through the process, but you could continue it and you can continue it just on that matter if you wanted to close the hearing except for discussion of classes. And then if you receive more information on that single topic, you could then make your decision without a full public hearing again.
So that would be an option. And we would come back at some date uncertain and hear more input on that matter and-
Specifically the class.
Specifically the class issue and, and close it out then, so. So I think we have two, two options as I'm hearing them. We can either, somebody can make a motion to approve or disapprove the petition, close it out. Or we could make a motion to, I guess it would be table the matter and close out everything except for discussion on, on the class issue, which people here seem to be concerned and want more input on. Would that be the correct vehicle we would use?
It would be continuing rather than tabling and specifically speaking to, if you're leaving the public hearing open on that single issue, that should be stated in the motion.
No, we're not gonna do that. We're, we're not gonna do that.
I think your motion is-
Yeah, I have a-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think that this, this has, we've had two lengthy meetings on this. I think we've heard, someone, one of the board members said, we've heard just about everything we're probably gonna need to hear. Anything that could have been proposed would have been proposed. Even during the discussions today, someone could have proposed something with respect to class size. I make a motion that the board vote on this special use permit tonight.
Do you want to elaborate on your motion?
Well, you just made it.
I just, I think we should, let's have a vote.
Let's vote on the photo note, we want to refer this to the city council.
Okay.
Everything we need to hear and also, I just don't think it's right to the petitioner and also to the neighbors to keep coming back and back.
All right, is, that's fine.
That's my motion.
That we have a vote on it.
Second.
Does somebody have a, just that we would have a vote tonight?
That we have a vote.
All right, do I have a second? There seems not to be a second. Would you like to withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay. So there we are. It would seem that the board might have support for option B. Somebody would like to make a motion to continue the matter and close out everything except the classroom issue, so to speak.
I could make a motion to continue discussion on this as, in regards only to classrooms, the number of classes held at the residence.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion? Is there a second for that motion?
Just clarification on the motion, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Does, does that mean that discussion will be confined, in public testimony, be confined to the issue or, or does it?
It, it, I think that's what we're talking about. We would confine future discussion on the classroom issue that you identified earlier.
Your, your discussion could be, you are making no decision tonight. I heard a question about whether that motion means their agreement. As I heard the motion, it simply continues the matter to allow for-
No, sir.
Further, further testimony to be presented on simply the matter of classes, the frequency, the size, the timing, anything related to classes. It would not limit your discussion. The board would simply take that additional information on classes and then again, be able to have a broad discussion as to whether the petition with any- again be able to have a, a broad discussion as to whether the petition with any revised information does or do not meet the full set of criteria.
I like that.
As, as well as the seven criteria that we have in front of us.
They would be, they would be incorporated anyway.
We, we can still discuss everything. We're just exploring this one topic further with the public.
Yeah.
Well, and I suppose, I suppose the question is, does the further limitation of classes help this special use permit to meet the criteria, the seven criteria? If it does, in anybody's mind, that's a pivotal question. If it doesn't, then it doesn't.
And that would be determined at a later date. So, all right, so let me hear that motion again.
I, I take the way, the way Sam worded it with the clarification that the board itself will be continuing, considering a decision and discussion in entirety on the subject. That was awkward. We, we simply don't, we, we, we don't wanna, we're not trying to say that we've decided anything. We're just continuing the matter and we want to explore further one single subject and confining public testimony and discussion to that subject.
To class size.
To class size, right.
Class frequency and size.
But the board's consideration of the entire petition remains open.
It's open. Could you read that back to me, Kathy?
Um, I, I believe Board Member Zicorelli's motion was to continue the petition to allow the opportunity for additional public testimony, both from the petitioner and anyone else to be submitted on the matter of classes, whether it be class size, class frequency, class duration. He also stated the, indicated the intent that the board would continue its discussion on the full matter and consider all seven criteria, once that information is received.
Correct.
Correct.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Sam, seconded by Lloyd. Let's have a roll call vote tonight.
Board Member Plonsker?
Uh, in favor of that.
Board Member Kennedy?
Aye.
Board Member Dixon?
In favor.
Chairman Frankson?
Aye.
Board Member Zicorelli?
Aye.
Board Member Culberson?
Aye.
Board Member Kristoff?
I'm against that.
Uh, that was a vote of six to one. The motion passes.
Thank you. So that will close out this matter. Thank you to everybody who came and gave public testimony this evening. We have one more matter to discuss, which should be brief. Actually, we'll move on to open opportunity for the public to address the zoning board of appeals on matters not on the agenda.
This is only-
Anybody liking to speak on matters not on the agenda this evening?
None.
None. Moving on to a consideration of the 2014 zoning board of appeals meeting schedule. You all have a copy of it in your packet. Any comment on that schedule?
Kathy, what's the asterix?
The, the asterix in March and May indicate that those meeting dates differ from the regular meeting date. March, I believe, is due to spring break. May, I believe, is due to Memorial Day.
Okay. Motion to approve that-
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All's opposed. Schedule is approved. Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Alls in favor? Aye. All's opposed. Meeting adjourned.